Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Lakewood City Council Study Session Agenda for this Monday, December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. We have a few items for discussion tonight. The first of which is our municipal court update with none other than our Municipal Court Judge Lisa Mansfield. Welcome.
Good evening to the citizens of Lakewood. Stand your mind and.
On first thing, good evening to the citizens of Lakewood, still coming to DePont City Council, Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, City Manager John Paul Field, and court partners who are present. My name is Judge Lisa Mansfield and it is my honor and privilege to preside as judge in Lakewood Municipal Court. Tonight, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to present an update on how Lakewood Municipal Court continues to be responsive to the ever-changing needs of our diverse community. In addition to briefly reviewing our traditional court functions, let's get this to work. It's not advancing. In addition to briefly reviewing our traditional court functions in both the criminal and civil contexts, I'll give a brief update on court tech developments. Then I will discuss new court programming which targets domestic violence. I'll then provide a general overview of therapeutic courts with a focus on Lakewood's therapeutic courts, which are Veterans Treatment Court and our newly-formed Community Court, which support public safety in Lakewood. Finally, I'll conclude with aspects of my own professional engagement and team acknowledgements. Lakewood Municipal Court is a court of limited jurisdiction, which provides both civil and criminal proceedings for our citizen. On the criminal side, we handle misdemeanors and gross misdemeanors. Misdemeanors such as driving while license suspended in the third degree are punishable by a maximum of ninety days in jail and a thousand dollars fine. Gross misdemeanors are things such as DUI and fourth-degree domestic violence, and they are punishable up to three hundred sixty-four days in jail and a five-thousand-dollar fine. Proceedings for criminal matters include arraignments, multiple pre-trials, motions, pleas, trials, sentencings, and multiple reviews. Most court hearings are held in person, but we do offer remote hearings under certain circumstances. We have a regular in-custody calendar which handles hearings from litigants housed in both Nusqually Jail and Pierce County Jail. Defendants housed in Pierce County are transported from the jail, and those from Nusqually are seen remotely over Zoom. In addition to jail, Lakewood Municipal Court offers less restrictive alternatives for sanctions. Work Crew is an alternative that allows those that qualify to perform supervised service in the community such as trash removal or graffiti removal or other maintenance. Electronic home monitoring allows for service of some or some portion or all of pretrial or sentence time at home. Court participants are monitored electronically and are confined to their homes except when following approved schedules such as work, school, or treatment. If the court is requiring a defendant to have alcohol monitoring, our probation department is trained to administer transdermal alcohol detection and breath alcohol detection devices. On the civil side, our court handles an animal and property calendar which addresses Lakewood Municipal Code violations with respect to property and animals. And while there are a wide range of code violations that we adjudicate, typically it will be cases like animals at large or unleashed pets or property maintenance violations on that calendar. The court also conducts civil traffic violations, including proceedings with or without a live officer, as well as traffic violations that are caught on camera and may be reviewed via video. The traffic calendar includes hearings such as red light and school zone violations and speeding and insurance violation. You should know that recently the city of DuPont has instituted school zone and red light video violation calendars in our court. Now moving on to technical updates. Lakewood Municipal Court now has DMS, our new document management system. This access has allowed for increased speed of processing court documents and processing public records requests. This helps the court stay abreast of GR thirty-one point one, which are the compliance requirements regarding public access to our documents. J-Mark updated our audio system this year, and the court has new video monitors as well as new microphones. There are still some glitches, but we're hoping that will work out soon. Now I'd like to highlight a new court program targeting domestic violence called DV MRT. Regarding public safety, Lakewood Municipal Court is deeply concerned with the prevalence of domestic violence affecting our community. We clearly understand that prevention and intervention is crucial to making a difference in this arena. This year, we have instituted a new program addressing DV. It's called Domestic Violence Moral Recognition Treatment, or DV MRT. And I did not mispronounce recognition, it's recognition. Domestic Violence Moral Recognition Therapy is a type of cognitive behavioral therapy that if successful, decreases the likelihood of future domestic violence incidents. So let me kind of drill down on how it works and a little bit of the background of the program. In nineteen eighty-six, it was introduced in a prison setting. In the early nineties, it was widely implemented in drug courts and juvenile programs. In two thousand and eight, it was designated as an evidence-based program by Substance Abuse Mental Health Services. And now it's in fifty states and in nine countries. And studies have shown that recidivism is reduced. How does it work? DV MRT uses cognitive behavioral modes to target thinking errors and challenges. Oh, let me say that again. DV MRT uses a cognitive behavioral model to target thinking errors and challenges, antisocial attitudes and beliefs. And just did a little research on what they call CBT, cognitive behavioral therapy. And it's, the background is that CBT assumes that psychological problems are based in part on faulty or unhelpful thinking and learned patterns of unhelpful behavior. And that people suffering from these psychological problems can learn better ways of coping. And that's what DV MRT attempts to do, teach people better ways. It targets faulty thinking and helps people find different options. So we don't have any local statistics from our court, but we do have statistics from Tuck Willa that I gleaned. Our program is just beginning. We actually had our second hearing today. But in Tuck Willa, the published data that I could see, there are stats from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and eighteen. Two hundred twenty-five folks enrolled, five transferred, and sixty-two or twenty-eight percent dropped out or were terminated, one hundred fifty-eight graduated. The percentage of recidivism or return to crime for graduates was nine percent, while the recidivism rate of unsuccessful participants was twenty-three percent. So you can see that there is an impact there with this program. We're optimistic that DV MRT will make a positive impact in reducing repeat incidence of domestic violence in Lakewood. So far, the feedback from participants has been favorable. We are aware that traditional domestic violence treatment programs continue to be available, but many participants in our community have a very difficult time affording that treatment. Consequently, many struggle to complete or fail to complete vitally-important domestic violence programming because of the cost barrier. And while not attempting to replace traditional DV programs, DV MRT will provide a lower-cost alternative. And I did a little bit of research. Our program here, I believe, costs about a hundred twenty-five dollars, and traditional programs can run upwards of two thousand, over two thousand dollars. So the whole point is to get people trained. And if the cost is a barrier, then DV MRT will be helpful in addressing that.
Chair, Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Chair. Judge Mansfield, I'm, can you just clarify a little bit about the the cost? Is that because this program is not administered by staff? But that people are referred to an outside provider for this program?
A lot of that does have to do with its in-house. So our probation department is trained to administer this program. And that's how it is in many courts of limited jurisdiction. This program works with folks in the court assisting with that training. And what happens in DV MRT is that it works as a peer group situation. So the participants are checks on each other, and they learn to move down the modules together with the oversight of probation.
So we have Lakewood's employees
Yes.
who are trained to run this program with.
Yes, Officer Daisy Lameli has been trained, as well as Daryl Kneather has been trained. They went to training to learn how to do this program.
Okay. And why do we charge the participants? What's the cost we're trying to recover?
Well, there are the time that is taken to help folks do this. There are materials involved. It costs about a hundred twenty-five dollars, which is an amazing savings.
I guess that would we see greater participation if we subsidize that cost for folks?
I'm not sure is the answer to that question. I mean, it helps when people don't have to pay, but sometimes a little skin in the game is important. So it's something to think about for sure.
Yeah, I guess I appreciate the statistic of where recidivism is different with this program than it is with nothing or even with even more traditional programs.
Well, that is the point, to reduce that revolving door of folks coming in and out of the criminal justice system. And we are trying to, in Lakewood Municipal Court, find low-cost, effective ways to do that. We've looked around and we saw that DV MRT was just that, low-cost and effective. So that's why we decided to implement it.
Okay, so on annual basis, how many participants were you expecting and projecting?
It's hard to make a projection on that. We just, as well as community court, we just started this program. So projections at this point, I'm not comfortable making.
Okay, I'm just trying to do some math in terms of a budget if we really wanted to push the cost down to a point of where we would almost be able to make it mandatory because there is no cost. If it's really that effective, that's really where I'm. That's really what the math I'm trying to do. It doesn't sound like we'll have several hundred a year. It sounds like we may have a few dozen.
That might be, yes, it's not going to be hundreds. It will be, folks, do you have any idea?
The court shows it's a six-month program, and so individuals have to be willing and capable to come weekly to court for six months if someone's even.
So I'll repeat what Angela Horwath just said. Angela Horwath does run Horwath Law. Thank you for showing up, and she's part of our defense team. She leads it. DV MRT is a six-month program. Traditional programs are a year. So it's a shorter program.
Okay, I guess I would ask you to consider if for the twelve thousand dollars, that would probably cover more than cover the anticipated number of folks, but would, you know, people don't complete the six months if they don't start the six months. And so the idea is that we invest in getting the maximum number of people started with that not being, with cost barrier being eliminated. It strikes me as something worth considering, and if you could, as the program begins to evolve, if you would consider that as we move into another budget by any, as to whether it's worth investing because domestic violence reduction, a big point in domestic violence reduction is reducing recidivism among the folks that are prone to do that. And so if a small investment is going to help with that, again, get more people into, because I think we sort of have three groups of folks. We have the folks who get the traditional things, and they are able to finance that for themselves to be able to go into this. We have this program that we're initiating as an alternative to that that is going off. And then, of course, the third option is nothing. Or whatever sanctions you're able to impose on someone. So, you know, I would be interested in hearing like nine months from now some information about whether we should invest in a way that would cause more people to be, to start the program. Not everybody finishes six months. The Tuck Willa data shows there are people who fail to complete as well. But I think that the goal is not so much to have the program, but for the program to make a difference.
Yeah, it's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for that point. I will, we'll be definitely looking at that, and we'll loop back around and let's remain in conversation about that. Okay. Moving on, I want to put things in a context, and I'd like to give you an overview of the therapeutic court model or treatment court programs models in general. Therapeutic courts are an alternative to the traditional trial track. This court model grants defendants the opportunity to obtain treatment and services to address underlying issues that may have contributed to their conduct that led to arrest. Therapeutic courts directly address the needs of people struggling with substance use disorder, mental health issues, and poverty. They typically offer intensive mental health and substance use disorder treatment in combination with continual monitoring by the court team. Some of the hallmarks of treatment courts include a team approach with greater collaboration between the defense and the prosecution, high levels of communication among team members, greater attention to service delivery and awareness and respect for cultural differences, consistent awards for accomplishments and sanctions for infractions, and cognitive behavioral counseling to address criminal thinking patterns are also indicative of therapeutic court models. In a typical therapeutic court setting, if a participant is successful in completing their conditions, their charge is either dismissed or amended down. But, and this is important, but if they are unsuccessful, their case will move to the sentencing phase, as they will have knowingly stipulated or agreed to the sufficiency of the police report when they entered the program. Therapeutic courts have existed in courts of limited jurisdiction for many years and have consistently demonstrated positive impacts on participants' lives and their surrounding communities. There are over seventy therapeutic courts in Washington Courts of Limited Jurisdiction, including Behavioral Health, Substance Use Disorder, Veterans Community, DUI, Domestic Violence, and Youth Courts. Lakewood Municipal Court is home to two treatment courts, Veterans Treatment Court and the new Community Court. Veterans Treatment Court. I'm sure you all are aware that we are a military community being close to Joint Base Lewis McCord. Lakewood Municipal Court proudly hosts a therapeutic court called Veterans Treatment Court. It was started in two thousand and sixteen with a grant from the Bureau of Justice Administration. Veterans Treatment Court uses a hands-on team approach to engage criminal justice-involved veterans in our community. Each litigant is given individual attention by the team. Prior to every court date, the court compliance officer Daisy Lameli sends a progress report summary. Then each participant's case is staffed. This means that before the actual court hearing, the court team discusses and gives attention as to how that individual's needs might best be met through services with consideration to their particular strengths and challenges. The core court team is comprised of the judge, defense counsel, and prosecution, probation, court administration, and a VA rep, Veterans Administration rep. Under this court model, the whole court team holds individual participants accountable for their actions, and we also celebrate participants' successes as a team. Participants report feeling engaged and supported in Veterans Treatment Court. The Vet Court Team emphasizes service delivery as well. If a participant is struggling with addiction, housing insecurity, job loss, grief, or other issues, we will link that individual with the services that they need. It's important to realize that the Vet Court Team does not function as an island. A large part of our success comes directly from the strength of our partnerships and community connections. Through our VA Representative Stacy Virtue, we are able to access court participants' VA benefits, which goes a long way in assisting with social stability. Pierce County Alliance provides support in the form of UA provision, and Lakewood Police provide ongoing aid and support. So I do want to give a special shout-out to Lakewood Police Department for that support, and also a special shout-out to Cameron Himes, Lakewood Code Enforcement Officer, who, when he worked as a court compliance officer for the court, was foundational in starting this program. We also partner with Pierce County Veterans Assistance. Larry Turk from that agency staffs a mobile unit that actually sets up in the municipal court parking lot. This unit provides emergency relief to veterans, but not only to veterans, but those in the community, the larger community, who are experiencing the effects of poverty. Hope for Heroes is a partner which provides equine therapy to support vets suffering the effects of PTSD. And our group Quilts of Valor provide exquisite handmade quilts to each vet who graduates Vet Court. It is a highlight of this judge to see a successful Vet Court graduate wrapped in a lovingly-made handmade quilt. They have deserved and earned that quilt, and they wear it proudly. Our court team is honored to receive the continuing support of our community partners, and we look forward to nurturing these relationships as well as building new ones. Okay, it's important to remember also that Veterans Treatment Court is an evidence-based treatment court model, and as such, our team is regularly trained on industry-best practices. Last year, the team participated in All Rise, the National Association of Drug Court Professionals Conference in Houston. And this year, we will go to the All Rise in Anaheim, California. As far as the success of this treatment goes, Lakewood has a veterans' treatment program to be extremely proud of. To date, the number of Vet Court graduates in Lakewood Municipal Court, Veterans Treatment Court to re-enter the justice system still equals zero. So that's a zero recidivism from two thousand and sixteen to now. That's not an accident. I think that really comes with the model, the hands-on, team-based approach and the community support and partnerships that we have. The high accountability which surrounds our veterans and the support they need to reintegrate fully into the larger community is a boon to Lakewood public safety. It's important for city leaders to note that BJA funding is not perpetually guaranteed. And while our grant was extended through next year, we don't at this time have any assurance that it will be extended beyond next year. Now on to Community Court and stopping the revolving door. At my court update last year, I informed the council that court would be evaluating a community court model. On August tenth of this year, the court informed the city manager that Lakewood Municipal Court applied for and was awarded a reimbursable administrative office of the court's allocation of one hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars for the funding of a community court. Our court team worked hard on presenting that grant to AOC, and we would not have received that allocation without the support of both the city manager and the city council. So I want to take this moment to thank you for that team collaboration. Also want to thank my partner. And our group Quilts of Valor provide exquisite handmade quilts to each vet who graduates Vet Court. It is a highlight of this judge to see a successful Vet Court gra- graduate wrapped in a lovingly made hand handmade quilt. They have deserved and earned that quilt, and they wear it proudly. Our court team is honored to receive the continuing support of our community partners, and we look forward to nurturing these relationships as well as building new ones. Okay, it's important to remember also that Vet Veterans Treatment Court is an evidence-based treatment court model, and as such, our team is regularly trained on industry-best practices. Last year, the team participated in All Rise, the National Association of Drug Court Professionals Conference in Houston, and this year we will go to the All Rise in Anaheim, California. As far as the success of this treatment goes, Lakewood has a veterans', uh, treatment program to be extremely proud of. To date, the number of Vet Court graduates in Lakewood Municipal Court, um, Veterans Treatment Court to re-enter the justice system still equals zero. So that's a zero recidivism from twenty sixteen to now. That's not an accident. I think that really comes with the model, the hands-on, team-based approach and the community support and partnerships that we have. The high accountability, uh, which surrounds our veterans and the support they need to reintegrate fully into the larger community is a boon to Lakewood public safety. It's important for city leaders to note that BJA funding is not perpetually guaranteed, and while our grant was extended through next year, we don't at this time have any assurance that will it will be extended beyond next year. Now on to community court and stopping the revolving door. At my court update last year, I informed the council that court would be evaluating a community court model. On August tenth of this year, the court informed the city manager that Lakewood Municipal Court applied for and was awarded a reimbursable administrative office of the court's allocation of one hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars for the funding of a community court. Our court team worked hard on presenting that grant to AOC, and we would not have received that allocation without the support of both the city manager and the city council. So want to take this moment to thank you for that team collaboration. Also want to thank my, uh, partners uh, in this community court effort, Angela Horwa, Amelia Hickock, Lise Schumacher. Uh, they can attest to the hours that were spent putting together this grant, um, and I'm really proud of our team, so thank you. Our court is in complete alignment with the city council goals and strategic plan objectives regarding public safety. We share a concern with the council about a revolving door of crime and people coming in and out of the criminal justice system. We are looking to build out the success we're experiencing with Veterans Court to more individuals in our community with Community Court. And what we're finding is that a hands-on, service-oriented approach with both support and accountability provided by the court team is a winning combination. As we do in Vet Court, we want to target what are known in the justice community as high-risk, high-needs individuals. According to the National Association of Drug Court Professionals, or NADCP, high-risk and high-need court participants typically are suffering from a severe substance use or mental health disorder, or have other social needs such as chronic homelessness or lack of job skills. In addition, they have serious risk factors for poor outcomes in standard treatment or community supervision programs such as extensive criminal histories, delinquent peer affiliations, or antisocial tendencies. Although these individuals have complex rehabilitation needs, the magnitude of the threat that they pose to public safety is minimal to moderate. That's that's in the purview of the Court of Limited Jurisdiction. So those are misdemeanors. Okay, these folks may be well-suited for placement in therapeutic court. We've seen the therapeutic court model work in Veterans Court, and we're optimistic about its efficacy in the newly-formed community court. But we can't be successful alone. Again, we rely on our partnerships, and our partnerships include, but are not limited to, United Way, Ideal Options, Greater Lakes, Tacoma Pro Bono, Multicare, LASSA, or Living Access Support Alliance, Clover Park Tech, and DSHS. And you'll notice there are a lot of overlap between, uh, the partners that Lakewood as a whole have in our in our partners. They're they're natural partners for us to make. The court interacts with our partners regularly and with intention. On community court days, our partners are invited to come staff tables and greet participants as they come out of court. This is a one-stop shop, so they can come to court and also get linked to the services that they need without having to travel, or, you know, transportation is a barrier sometimes. Yes.
Just a quick question on that. I think it's sounds like a very positive, um, program. Is one hundred eighty-seven thousand on this particular grant used then to provide those services once linked to someone in the court, or what?
The bulk of the bulk of that money, in which we're figuring out now since it's so new, but the bulk of that money will go to, um, provide salary for we for what we call a community court coordinator. That is the person who kind of oversees the court programming and can help link to services and just drive drive the program forward. Because guess what? I have a job, um, doing other things, and they have jobs doing other things. We need somebody to focus on this court to make it really run well.
So would this be an FTE hired by the city at some point for the twenty-four, twenty-five?
Correct, but what you need to know is that it's reimbursable. So, um, not only is it reimbursable, it's, uh, renewable. We expect to get this from the state next year and the year after that and the year after.
So we front it and then they reimburse?
Exactly, so really, nothing comes out of the city's pocket. And I do want to let the council know that this court always has an eye on how can we do things effectively and how can we save money? So I always have my ear to the ground for programs that the city of Lakewood does not have to come out of pocket for, just so you know. Okay, um, so I was talking about the one-stop-shop approach. Uh, participants can link with necessary service providers and get their needs met, cutting down on time, transportation, and associated cost. Our court also tries to meet immediate need by providing food items and other necessities for participants suffering from food insecurity and the effects of homelessness. But, uh, what may be the most important part of this program is that the participants have a sense of dignity. They are seen, they are heard, they are respected, and as a result, they start to respect themselves. And what I've seen, especially in Veterans Court, is that people come in broken. They start to heal themselves. And at the end of the program, guess what? They start to heal others. They start to become leaders. They start be they start to teach others how to behold citizens. That is the magic of these therapeutic courts, and that is something that I'm really trying to explain to you. Well, um, we're getting near the end, uh, and you can see a garden growing. We are growing our court programs. This is my, uh, first attempt at growing vegetables here in, uh, a Lakewood park. I came down to City Hall and got myself a plot, and, uh, I wanted to share that. Yes, they are all completely legal and delicious. Oh, yeah. As a judge, I believe it's important to be both active in the community and to continue the process of growth and learning. I remain active on the DMCJA Therapeutic Courts Committee and Nominations Committee. I continue to contribute to our state legal journal, Bar News. Uh, in addition to annual state judicial conferences, I attended a national conference this year regarding race in the court system, uh, called NCREF. The All Rise Conferences in Houston that I mentioned earlier. This year, I presented, uh, on a panel, uh, of the Washington State Bar Association Criminal Law Section on recent case law developments regarding jury selection and, uh, bias. I continue to co-chair and support UWT, um, Legal Pathways, which supports non-traditional students finding a pathway to law or law-related careers. I regularly seek, uh, speaking engagements in Lakewood, such as the Lakewood Police Citizens Academy, Clover Park Rotary, and the Kiwanis Club, and I am a proud member of the Clover Park Rotary. Recently, I was honored to be invited by Washington Supreme Court Justice Deborah Stevens to join a select national cohort of judges and justice leaders, the Washington State Jurisdiction Team, and the Data Science and Artificial Intelligence Initiative, or DSAI. This project has two goals. Certification of resource judges and court leaders to aid their colleagues in courts regarding the rapidly expanding evidence and issues presented by big data and several forms of artificial intelligence. And two, the development of adjudication tools and training resources to assist the work of courts in criminal, civil, and equitable cases. So this concludes my twenty twenty-three overview of Lakewood Municipal Court, including a review of traditional and therapeutic court models, tech updates, our new DV program, DVMRT, and our veterans and newly-formed community court. At this time, I'd like to extend my thanks to my court administrator, Dina Wright, the court clerks, the Vet Court and Community Court teams, our community partners for their unflagging support of Lakewood Municipal Court, and the prosecution and defense represented here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm sure we have a few questions by members of the council. Councilmember Bill?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks.
Thank you, Judge. Great presentation. Love all the information. Found it very informative. I was just wondering, I'm very interested in the DVMRT program. It's new to me, something I hadn't heard of. So I would really look forward to any more information and coming back, you know, in six months to a year when you have information of how that program has played out in Lakewood. Um, you know, was it effective? All of that kind of stuff, so.
I'd be happy to present again on that and give you an update on how it's going.
Yeah, it sounds very like it could be really effective, so I would like to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you for your interest.
Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, and thank you, Judge Hansfield. Uh, two questions. Uh, first, you talked about Veterans Court and it's funded by AOC, is that right?
Veterans Court is funded by, uh, the Bureau of Justice Administration, BJA.
Gotcha. Uh, and you mentioned that it's not a guarantee that they're going to continue funding?
It's kind of guaranteed that they won't.
Okay, so do we know what that cost would be for the city in the future if we were to be funded?
I'll get back to you on the hard numbers, for sure.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and then the other question I had is, uh, are Lakewood Municipal Court proceedings open to the public if people?
Every day.
Great.
They are open, and I'd like to expand extend a special invitation for you to, uh, come see our Veterans Court, which is on the second Wednesday of every month at two P M.
Okay.
You can see us in action.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yes, so, yeah, this Wednesday.
That'd be great.
Yes, and afterward afterwards.
Ms. Schumacher, maybe we can get that put on our calendar if you would force that. Or not force it, push it out on the calendar. That's helpful sometimes to appear. So, Mr. Anderson?
One of the barriers to therapeutic court has been the cost of therapy, and, you know, s- some veterans have benefits that others don't have. You had instances where, uh, a veteran was not eligible for services and therefore with the VA and therefore couldn't participate in the program.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part of what you said.
Have you had any circumstances where the veteran was eligible for the program but not eligible for VA benefits for therapy? So they couldn't participate in the?
I don't remember an incidence of that nature. Okay, so what, why don't you just come on up and get?
Yeah, please.
This is part of a legislative record, so we do need to have it into the microphone. Thank you.
So Phil, introduce yourself for the record, please.
My name is Amelia Hickock. I'm the Veterans Court Defense Attorney.
And so you wanted to address?
Yes, so, uh, we have had that come up, um, on a few different occasions, but they're able to tap into, um, uh, state health insurance, and we've been able to get them to to access mental health care or substance use treatment through, um, Apple, Apple Care, um, or through other means. It hasn't been a barrier.
Okay, so there is an alternative.
Yes, there are. We we don't drop them. They don't they don't go, uh, untreated in the program. Thank you.
Mr. Brown Center?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Judge, I appreciate the comment. Say, I just had a couple of points I wanted to ask so that I don't go away confused. Um, in 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 your discussion about the Veterans Court, you talked about the Pierce County Alliance providing UA provisions, and I don't know what UA?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, and I I do have a tendency to to speak in, um, shorthand sometimes.
I was in the Army, and so I know about acronyms and how they.
Your analysis testing. So that is one way we we provide accountability. We need to know what levels, if if they are drug-free or not.
Okay, and in your 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 remarks about, uh, types of therapeutic courts, um, in that list, the it's one of the types of courts that was mentioned was youth court. And I guess that I I I'm wondering if because we're a court of limited jurisdiction, eh, you know, uh, is is a a youth court not a potential future initiative?
Not unless the whole system was rearranged. No, we we are we're dealing with adults in this court.
Well, you you know, I I guess that I would just observe they looking at the direction of of youth behavior uh, and of and of the the number of youths that are getting into becoming well on their way to becoming career criminals, um, and that and and the, uh, and the current system that we have that to deal with that seeming to be very ineffective, okay, in Pierce County anyway. Um, if, uh, so I'm I'm sorry to hear that that's not not an area that we're that we're precluded from going go 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 going into.
I agree that it's a problem, and I will say that I actually, I don't have any numbers for you right now, but I am sometimes shocked at, um, the how young folks are coming in front of me. They're adults, but they are they're young, and uh, especially with the DV, and and what what I think, um, based on what I've seen is that it's cyclical. And what we'd like to do is stop that cycle. That's that's what we'd like to do.
Okay, and then, uh, my last question is you mentioned that you made a presentation somewhere on uh, jury selection and bias. Um, and is that a problem in Lakewood?
I don't think so. I don't, I don't, I I think that our jurors juries could be more diverse. Uh, I would like to see that, um, but as far as jury selection and the the, um, attorneys that come before me, I have I have not seen that play out.
Okay, that's good to hear. Thank you.
There's some questions. Deputy Mayor Moss?
More of a comment. Uh, thank you for the presentation. It was really good. My undergrad study was in domestic violence, so I am very interested in that. And is it an opportunity for me to even get in, not involved, but into some of the lead-ups to that? Because I get asked a lot to talk about domestic violence, and I really don't have the background to do that.
So, um, I just want to be clear about what you're what you're asking me. What would you what would you like?
I would just like more information.
I will provide more information.
I have a few follow-up questions unless anyone else has questions of the judge. So I want to thank you very much for the the information, the presentation, the overview. I I think what would be also helpful in kind of the annual review is just a little bit of the numbers. It would be interesting to educate us about how many folks are coming through municipal court, and then how many either get diverted to, uh, Veterans Court on the therapeutic side, or potentially, because I know it's new. But the new community court, it would be nice to know next year kind of how we're measuring our success, and that helps us gauge, obviously, budget numbers to help you and the citizens. But it'd be nice to have an overview slide about here's what district court looks like in twenty twenty-three year-to-date. You know, these are the people that are being charged. These are the people that are being arraigned. These are the people that are, uh, having, um, track A, B, or C, and you know, whether it's community service, or they're getting a fine, or they're getting off, or they're not, you know, whatever it is. It would be really helpful to have the data.
Okay. Well noted.
So in in absence of, uh, data, I I guess anecdotally, what are you seeing most and what concerns you as a presiding officer seeing folks come in day in and day out? What are you seeing most? Obviously misdemeanors. I get that, but.
Well, I'll tell you what concerns me most. Uh, as I said earlier, the age of the DV, um, litigants that come in the the court. Um, I'm also concerned, um, if a DV victim is not accessing the services he or she needs, he, she, or they need to, um, make themselves safe.
Right.
Um, so I'm I'm interested in that happening, um, because what what really affects me is, uh, when our vulnerable children see this domestic violence. And as I said, it's cyclical. Those folks who were who come in front of me were at one time that vulnerable child.
Right.
Um, and so stopping that cycle is something that everybody on the court team is interested in doing. That so that that concerns me most.
You know, we did that enhanced penalty to our ordinance some time ago at the behest of the system, uh, the prosecutor, uh, at the time. Do you do you feel that that tool is giving you enough to stem the tide, so to speak, of those folks who are doing or conducting domestic violence activities in front of children? Because that was the genesis of the request for the or conducting domestic violence activities in front of children? Because that was the genesis of the request for the change, and we said, sure, we'll give you that tool. And are we seeing positive results of that enhanced tool?
Domestic violence is a complex issue, so I don't have a short answer to that. I can say as a judge that I think that it is it is a valid charge because of the cyclical nature.
Yeah.
What we're trying to do is prevent that. We're trying to prevent domestic violence in front of kids. We're trying to prevent it and prevent it in front of kids especially. So.
Do you see, again, anecdotally, a fair number of frequent flyers return folks, or are they taking the punishment slash treatment to heart and trying to, I know it's challenging, but are we seeing less frequent flyers or the same?
Okay, so the reason that we we are drilling down on the therapeutic courts is because they target what what are known, as I said, high-risk height folks. And these are the folks who are coming in and out of the system. So there are a few that do a greater number of of the crimes. There are a few that come, but then they have a big impact, right?
Right.
So if we can stem that impact, give them the services that they need, get them feeling some sort of confidence, some sort of dignity, so that they can grow as individuals, as I've seen in Veterans Court, and I'm starting to see in community court. We can get that cycle going. I think that those numbers will come down. Time will tell, but if I look at the data from other jurisdictions, it is effective, so I think it's worth a try here.
So the team that's in place to assist in the therapeutic courts, Veterans and now Community Court, they consist of our team here, right, in Municipal Court in Lakewood? Are they adequately resourced to do the work?
We can always use more help.
How many people are on the team?
For example, for example, can I just tell you?
Absolutely.
Today, you know, it's the holiday time, and it's a crucial time, not only for, you know, folks who are having food insecurity or folks who are in, you know, having that instability. It's hard for for a lot of folks, but especially hard for the vulnerable population. My family decided last night to put together hygiene kits for the folks coming, and we passed them out at court because just want to meet people where they are and address those basic needs. Was I funded? No. Did it need to happen? Yes. So, yeah, we could we we could use as much help as we can get.
That's an excellent point, because that could be a really good project for Rotary Club or some of the other clubs that would love to step up and say, because I get asked all the time, what are the needs that we can help address?
Ding 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 ding.
Right. This is where we just need to get educated and and get coordinated, right? Because they were looking to do some of that work philosophy directly, but there's no reason why we couldn't.
So I'll tell you.
Municipal Court.
Both Ms. Hickock and Ms. Schumacher approached me and said that they would come with me to different clubs and organizations to present on these topics, and I think I still have your support, do I not? Okay.
Why don't we do that? If we can get some data to kind of define the issue and then present what we're doing to it to address, I don't want to say attack, but address the issue and the other need and how they might be able to fit or fill part of that need. That would be great. That would be a great program.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That'd be good. Let's see, what else do I have here? So the veterans successes this year, how many folks do you think came through the program successfully from beginning to end?
Graduates, did we have folks? We're graduating like.
Yeah, that's good.
We're larger than Thurston County. We're larger than Pierce County.
Can you can you please drop to microphone again? I know it doesn't feel like it, but it is. It's a legislative record.
Ms. Schumacher will beat on me if they don't think it's a good record.
Let's not get Miss Schumacher mad at us. We will.
It's a program that we're all really excited about, and it's just been we've been brought to tears multiple times to see how it's changed people's lives. It's been really, really incredible.
That's great.
Highlight of a highlight of my position as a tenured public defender is was really great to see that change happening. And, but yeah, we've had at least a dozen graduates this year, and we're having two more graduations on Wednesday.
On this Wednesday.
Yes.
Three-ish?
Come. It starts at two, but it's good to see you get, you know, a lot of the magic happens in the court proceedings itself. That's when you hear the stories. That's where you see the growth. And I will tell you, as a judge, I have many times told folks in front of me that I am learning from them. It's not me teaching. I'm learning from how they overcome struggles and how they persevere. So please come so you can see for yourself.
Got it. Two o'clock.
Get to hear some graduation. They're always tearjerkers.
Well, you know, that's great stuff, because it's changing lives in a very real way. So that's good. That's good to hear. Well, that is all I had. So funding for therapeutic court, it looks like initially both veterans and the new community court, veterans with their existing resources, community court funded by the reimbursable funding grant currently. So it'll be great to see and to kind of reflect on this next year when we meet together for an annual sort of update.
I look forward to it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions from the group? Thank you. Have a happy holidays, and thank you for your excellent teamwork serving the residents of Lakewood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our items for discussion tonight is a review of the public art policy through the Public Arts Commission, or the Arts Commission, I should say. So with us tonight, we have our Parks, Recreation, Community Services Director, Mary Dodsworth.
And I'll introduce Lonnie for you as well.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor and Deputy Mayor, City Council members. We're here tonight to chat about or present to you the draft public art policy that was recommended by the Lakewood Arts Commission. You know, the Arts Commission's been supporting the council for many, many years. In the last 10 years, we've really sort of amped up our public art program in providing visual arts throughout the community. And so we've been doing lots of different projects over the years, learned lots of great lessons. And then when we were updating the public art policy, looked at several different city programs that had pretty large and robust public art programs. You know, they're very well staffed, and they've been lots of best practices. And so we're presenting to you in what we think is a really easy-to-follow format based on our current operations, based on lessons learned as well as best practices. So I'd like to introduce Lonnie Neal. She works with us. She works in our Parks, Recreation and Community Services Department. She works primarily with our arts and special events, farmers markets. And so she is filling in tonight, and she is going to share the work that was done by the Arts Commission on our public art policy.
Thank you.
And she was also the manager keeper of our holiday program on Saturday and our parade. So all the kudos that you're probably going to give to that great program. A lot of it has to do with the work that Lonnie did with our team and our community.
Thank you, everybody. Yes, I'm Lonnie Neal, and it was wonderful to see everybody on Saturday. So thank you for braving the rain and being there. It was really nice. So I am just going to go through some of the sections on this policy. I'm not going to read it line by line. But just to point out what the Arts Commission has been, we have had several in-depth reviews of this document and have been tailoring it, and I think it's, yeah, it's coming together very nicely. So, you know, our mission statement essentially is that we're providing high-quality public art as a way to express the city's history and cultural heritage and to enhance our community's sense of spirit, pride, and values. And we want our community to be able to experience and value the arts and to provide places for people to gather and to create commonality. So art, of course, can be a variety of things. It's not just paintings and sculptures, but you, you know, if you think about dance, performance, concerts. So we talk about a wide range of artwork. The basically, the 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 beginning of this whole process is that the city council sits and comes up with some budget money for us in your biennial process so that we can start getting art on the docket. And of course, that includes and is but is not limited to doing single signal box wraps, murals, rotating art, big installations, sculptures, et cetera. So Section 1 is the artist selection, and this is basically the process of how we would select an artist. The the opening category here essentially is that we want to give preference to Lakewood artists if we can. If all things are given equal, it it's kind of like geographical concentric rings, so to speak. Depending on what the project is that we're working on, if we think we need to go outside of Lakewood, we would branch it out to Greater Puget Sound area. We could reach out even further than that to the Pacific Northwest, or in some cases, we may feel the need to have like a national calling for artists. And when those proposals come in, if we have a Lakewood artist that is equal in caliber to the other artists that have been that that have presented themselves, then we would give a reference to Lakewood. I hope that is making sense. And then there are going to be times where perhaps we have a special project that we we want to partner with special groups or cultural. There may be reasons for having cultural influence or cultural organizations. You know, if we're going to get collaborate with the Nisqually on something, or if we have something that we, like the Pacific Islander, if we want to have some influence with that, we could connect with the Asia-Pacific Cultural Center. So a lot of that is just very specific to whatever the artwork is. So Section A, so in this section, we have a few different options of how we have selected art artists. It's not limited to this, but so far through our practices, this we've kind of determined these are pretty solid ways that we do the process. So there's open competition, and that's where we have a request for qualifications or a request for proposals that we send out. And the artists that submit their things, they of course submit their name. They they submit some information about why they're interested in doing our project. They'll have a resume, and typically with artists, of course, that would be some sort of a portfolio as well as the previous art that they have done. We have the ability to reach out to public art rosters. And currently, there are three that we have been working with. We're not limited to these, but these are these are rosters that have been vetted. So they are a great tool for us, and that's the Washington State Arts Commission roster, the Sound Transit roster, and the City of Tacoma mural roster. So we reach out, we can reach out through these rosters with a a request for artwork and and have artists submit their information. The Arts Commission can narrow down the list of who were interested in to propose to city council to choose from. And at that juncture, we also ask the artists if they want to opt in or opt out of the project. So and if they opt in, then there there's some follow-up information that we would have with them, dialogue specific about the project.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
So would you narrow down and give us the list for consideration and approval before they opt in or opt out? Shouldn't they opt in or opt out before they come to us, or?
It ideally, I think, would be after they've.
Okay.
I I certainly wouldn't want to waste your time and find out that, you know, we have six artists and four of them decided they don't want to do the project. Yeah, yeah.
That was my thought, chicken and the egg thing. Mr. Brand Center, real quick.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your presentation so far, and as I read this, I'm having trouble deciding how performing artists figure into this system.
During a performance, it really varies on actually the performance and the situation. For something like the International Stage at Summerfest, we would work, we've worked in the past with the Asian Pacific Cultural Center and asked them to put together a list of performances that we think would be appropriate for the day and the situation and the location. And then we would review that and make sure that that was appropriate to the event. That's probably not a list of individuals we'd bring forward to council for consideration and approval, because it's typically when we talk about the criteria for selection, the value, I guess, of all of those performances together would be less than a certain dollar amount. But this is really more often for something that's a visual art or sculpture or a signal box or something like that. So it's not typically for a performance, so to speak, or the summer concert.
Visual, physical.
Correct. Yeah, for this.
Works, works, do that. All right, thank you. Just wanted to make sure that I understood the where the walls are on what we're talking about.
Yeah, the preamble where they talk at the beginning before Section 1 kind of boxes us to public art projects in Lakewood, including and unlimited to signal box wraps, murals, rotating art sculptures. So that gives us the parameters. Yeah.
Right.
Another method that we use is direct selection. And that's where the the commission can may select or just recommend an artist based on somebody that has been referred to us, or we've seen studio tours, or we've seen their art installed in other locations. And I'll give you a great example of this that will come up a little bit later in this discussion. We did a request for artwork using an art roster for our mural boxes, and we had an adult here in Lakewood who applied and then requested that they could have their high school student submit artwork as well, because they weren't sure if we were accepting youth artwork. And of course, we are. We just think that's fantastic. And the end result of that, his name is Sam Reed, and he's a student at Harrison Prep. And he has actually two mural boxes that were selected and have been installed here. The utility box wraps, yeah, yeah. So that's a great example of a direct selection. So he submitted his artwork. The Arts Commission reviewed that artwork against all the other pieces that were being reviewed at that time, and we ended up selecting two pieces of that work. So that's an example of a direct selection. And then the last possibility is having a stakeholders group. And that, again, is project-specific. If we're working on something, I I threw down the words here, like perhaps the Ford dealership. Maybe there's something that Ford would like to have installed in front of their building, and they want to collaborate, then we would pull together a special stakeholders group that involves the right people, basically, to sit and review the art. So Section 2 is the criteria for selecting public art, and that is how we select the art. It's not limited to this list, but this list is a good checkpoint and review system. It's make sure that we're kind of covering the different things we want. And this list is also things that we can specifically include in the request for art. If we're submitting a, you know, a request for proposal, that we have certain criteria that are in there. And in the first sentence, you'll see at the end of it, it says artwork of the highest quality is determined by a series of criteria as applicable. And we put that in in as an example with Sam Reed, who is a student. You know, some of the criteria is, you know, the amount of professionalism, and do they have a resume and a portfolio? Well, we certainly don't expect that of a student who's 14 years old, so that is as applicable. And I'll just quickly read these off, but I'm not going to go all the way through them. It's a. and I'll just quickly read these off, but I'm not gonna go all the way through them. It's about uh, the quality, you know, are we getting the highest caliber art where we can have the budget? Can the artists be within the budget? Uh, can the artists meet our deadline? The professionalism, again, can they um, demonstrate that they have a mastery of the skills of the art that they're proposing? Um, they have a professional approach to the process and presentation. They have good communication about what it is they're gonna be doing. Do they have the ability to do the work? Um, the style and nature, is it, is the proposed artwork in the right scale, the right material? Um, the function of it, where it's gonna be placed, uh, the context of it, how it's gonna be viewed and interacted with, with the public. Permanence and technical feasibility. Um, a lot of that is, you know, the, sort of the nitty gritty of the, will it stand up to the permitting and utility requirements and is public safety and protection against theft, theft and vandalism, weathering, uh, maintenance, all the things that we have to do to sustain that piece of art in our city's collection. And diversity, uh, every effort will be made to represent Lakewood's cultural diversity. The overall program will strive for diversity of style, scale, media, subject matter, and geographical distribution of the artwork. So uh, and again, there's a little, there's a sentence in there that we're talking about. This could include professionals or up and coming artists, for example, like our students. Section three is the review and approval process. Um, all of these projects are based on uh, you, the city council approving a budget and the work program. The Arts Commission will approve artwork under fifteen thousand dollars. City council will be briefed for concurrence of any artwork under fifteen thousand prior to the work being completed. And then uh, city council review all artwork valued over fifteen thousand, be briefed throughout the design and development process. And then uh, before any artwork is actually committed to fabrication. And then city council reviews and approves all artist contracts valued over fifty thousand, and that's per city policy. Then section four is about public art donations, acquisitions, or memorial guidelines. This is kind of a, you know, it's a slightly different way that artwork uh, would make it into the, the city collection. Um, so of course, we have the sole discretion, y- y- youth, the, the city retains the sole discretion to accept or reject proposed applications. And we did use some language in here that has been uh adopted in the naming and renaming from public, for public parts, facilities, streets, or open space language, you, with renaming streets and all of that, um, it, it's great language. So the opening sentence is proposed public art donations, acquisitions, or memorial applications will be submitted to the city and referred to city council by the city manager. City manager or designee will direct a process appropriate to the proposal. That just works, it's very uh, applicable in public, the public art as well. Uh, also, taken from the naming and renaming language is Oh, I'm so sorry.
We got a quick question from Councilmember.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I just, I'm struggling with the, what is meant by acquisitions. I understand donations and I understand the re- request to establish memorials to be able to do that. I just not quite clear what acquisitions mean in the context of this section.
Sometimes um, an organization may come forward and, and recommend a piece of artwork, but they're not bringing resources with it, but they're, so I would say at that point, then the city would be acquiring or uh, paying for the artwork, so to speak, but it wasn't generated by the city council's annual work program, or it wasn't a recommendation from the city council to the Arts Commission to work on a project. So um, someone may come forward and say, we wanna donate this work to the city. Someone may come forth and want to do a memorial on behalf of a person or a place or an activity or an event. Or they may say, um, they want the city to acquire this on behalf of, for some reason. We just put that in there, because it was part of criteria that had been in other public art programs, so that's why we put it here. But the process is, is that if someone's gonna come forward with a request that wasn't a direct request from the city council, then we would have an application process so that we could gather the information from them so that council could make a good decision, or we could do the background and the research so that uh, you're not just getting someone at a city council meeting saying, hey, this sounds great, that there's actually a process involved. That's and we mirrored it after the naming policy, because that seemed in the last several times we've done that, that that was a good way of gathering information, background information. Uh, you could ask all those questions that you might wanna ask uh, before you do the formal process.
So in this context, an acquisition would be, you know, just say that if my, if uh, a, a service club uh, submitted a request to the city that said, we'd like you to uh, create a piece of art that honors uh, or, or that, or, or, or that, that, that yeah, you know, is, is, is a depiction of some building that's no longer here, that, that they would submit a request for the city to do that, even though they don't submit any resources. And then, then they, so the, the, the I had not, and, and I guess that I, I understand that, I just don't know that that's, that's certainly different than a memorial or it's different than someone bringing us a piece of art and said, we'd like to give this to you. Uh, you know, and, and, and we decide whether it fits or not to do that. Um, kind of seems like the least likely of the three.
Sure.
Um, but to be able to go, go on, to be able to go and do that. O- okay, I just, just trying to get my, my head around what, what that meant.
And, and there's another section coming up that talks about the city council recommending purchasing a piece of artwork. So they kind of did this as if there was an opportunity where you're gonna acquire something, but it wasn't actually your idea, so to speak, so.
Yeah, we'll talk about how four and six kind of intermesh. Uh, Councilmember Anderson had a question.
Yeah, aren't you talking really about two categories? One's commissioning art, the other one's buying?
Correct.
Rather than blending them together, saying, here's, okay, if we're gonna commission it, here's our process. If you're gonna buy it, we've got option A, we initiate it, option B, somebody comes to sell it to us.
Yeah. Correct.
Maybe maybe it's not our terms that we need, that we either commission it or we buy it. Or purchase.
I, I could see that, that scenario.
Different, we acquire A, we acquire B, we get a memorial, we're either gonna get commissioned, I guess there's commissioned by and donate.
Yeah, because I think we just need to tweak a little bit with section six, because an art donation makes sense to me, a memorial gift makes sense to me. An acquisition is kind of a purchase in a sense, maybe. Um, but down below, we're talking about in section six, and I know Lonnie will get there, but we're talking about yeah, the, the purchasing, like we've chatted a little bit before, when we do the art shows out there, maybe the Arts Commission might recommend acquiring one, if we had the budget, maybe once a quarter or some piece as we build a collection, so however you wanna tie that in. I think, I think you're there in section six. We just need to make it clear in section four that acquisition is something different or akin to a purchase.
Council can provide direction to us to change that word acquisition, to remove that word, to change it to commission, um, whatever council
Yeah, yeah.
uh, believes is the right word to be in there. Just give us that direction and we'll update the document for your final approval.
Okay.
Fantastic. Yes, so just at the bottom of page four, um oh, sorry, page twenty-two.
Yep.
Four of the um, proposed guidelines. Um, that, I just wanna point out a couple of things with the, the memorial art. Um, if somebody wants to have art donated as a memorial, um, it's, it, I say this word wrong all the time, posthumous, you flee. So in, in other words, it has to be um, for some, the event, it, it's either after death or the event has uh, already occurred. And there's a waiting period of thirty-six months. And uh, basically, that's a lot to allow time for the emotions to settle out of something, and then to be able to really focus on what the artwork would be.
Okay.
But just to clarify, that's consistent with the naming policy, but of course, council can direct, um, can, can change that by council decision, but this in the policy, just from a general use for individuals, again, um, you know, it kind of lets everything calm down, and then we can make those decisions.
Uh, section five is art on loan, and it's really specific to whatever that art is going to be. So there would be a art display agreement uh, that is about the artwork and what the terms of the loan is, essentially. And then section six is the city arts purchases.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, so.
And then it begs the question, Lonnie, do we also approve the actual art consistent with the provisions above, or, or, or does it just go through the Arts Commission? I suppose it would be subject to section four, right? Proposed public art acquisition would be submitted to the city and referred to the city council by the city manager. Is that how that would work if we wanted to buy a piece?
I'm sorry, I missed that question.
So if you're buying, if you're buying a piece of art or you're budgeting as a council for public art to be acquired periodically via section six, does it go through the guidelines in section four as an acquisition?
It, it really can just depend on how council wants to do that. Generally, it would be part of our budget process. You would allocate it during the, uh, make that determination as part of our public art program
Mm-hmm.
uh, through our biennial budget process. Uh, you could decide mid-year, again, I guess, if you wanted to do that too, but we'd be receiving direction from council that you wanted to purchase a piece of artwork once a year, or per art show, or council goes to all of the art receptions and everybody agrees there's a fan favorite. So council would provide those direct, that direction, or as part of the work program for the Arts Commission, council could direct the Arts Commission to come up with um, program or policy or something like that. So it's really directed by council to determine how that would work. Now, it could be
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do, do we wanna micromanage the smaller acquisitions as a council? I don't think so.
Correct.
I think the policy would be Arts Commission through the budgeting process, given the guidelines, can pick whatever. That's just me. Mr. Brand Center, real quick?
Well, Mayor, I, 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 I do think that that's a there's a threshold
Yeah.
there, uh, that, uh, you know, we certainly have the fifty thousand dollar threshold, uh, that's, 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 uh, that's, that's, uh, that's there, and uh, you know, that, that, that seems to, to work somewhat. I think, you know, uh, you and I can remember uh, fifteen years ago, um, the uh, the annual amount budgeted was zero. And, 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 and we have, and the council has worked over time to uh, um, you look at making sure there was something every year. We have, uh, you know, sort of, so, 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 baseline of where we got to do revenue that was generated from the McGavick Center was donated to this, uh, although that will have to be readdressed as we approach the sunsetting of our uh, uh, agreement with the Cooper Park Technical College and being able to go and do that. And then we have allocated money somewhat on a project basis, okay, to be able to go and do that, but we've also added a small amount of funds that were discretionary to the Arts Commission to be able to select things, and I think we can look at the the signal box wraps as something that was budgeted. And we never really looked at any design, but it followed the guidelines of, let's, well, let's look for the local people, let's look to to, to do that, and let each one be unique as opposed to Tacoma where the same one is on fifteen different corners uh, and, and, and other things. So I think that that's uh, um, uh, s- something that will take care, care of itself without uh, particularly needing to establish some thresholds here to be able to go and do that. Uh, I think that the the thing we need to learn from was our experience with the art work at the Colonial Plaza. Uh, somehow or another, I'm not quite sure that I read in this policy the, the ongoing things that would have prevented the problems that occurred there with, first of all, being a year into a contract for a piece of art that the artist walked away from. Uh, and that we never got, and, and then we got a, and I think maybe we, we rushed into approving a second piece of art that the, that then midway through it, the art, artist wanted to redesign it, so we were so far into it, we agreed to the to, to the redesign. And then when it was finally finished, there were elements of it that were embarrassing. Uh, that we didn't have a process to, 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 going along to do that. So I think we should make sure that we have in our policy some ongoing reviews of projects to make sure in that we're we're, we're, we're quite sure of our, of our, of our initial selection of artists, uh, that, uh, um quite frankly, uh, I, I don't know, I don't know what went wrong with the first the first approved piece of art that, that, that went on, which I still wish we, 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 I think was there. Uh, I, I think we ended up with a default second choice, and then the default second choice got morphed, and we're going to wait a number of more years before it, the surface of that uh, thing sort of ages to the final aesthetic um, view of it to do that. So I, I think the public art program in the city over the past dozen years is one of our successes. That it, it is well on its way towards in, enhancing the comp element of our vision for the city about a viable energetic arts of culture and, 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 and going on, and it's going to be able to go and do that. But uh, we need the, the, the Arts Commission, uh, and to the extent that we ourselves are involved in some things. Um, you know, it, it, it's, it's one of those things that public art has a permanency, so it's important that it be done well. Okay, and that it uh, it, 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 it meets expectations across where, where we're going. So, so I, I like seeing the policy uh, as, as it is, uh, I, I, I would maybe like something in there that says that once we agree with something with an artist, that, that, that we're, we're not giving an artist carte blanche to do whatever he wants, but that we have some monitoring about how, how, how the project uh, uh, takes shape. Um, to make sure that goes on off, because I think in addition to the Colonial Plaza piece, I think we the community experienced that with, when Sound Transit originally posed a piece of art at the Sounder Station. Where uh, you, you know, wh- which, which ultimately fortunately didn't happen, but, but that, the, the, the the concept didn't withstand publics, uh, uh, public scrutiny. Um, and so there's a there's there's there is a there 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 is a role for public scrutiny when we're when we're going to invest fifty thousand or a hundred thousand dollars or something in a in a in a piece of art. Um, and that there is maybe a way in this policy to sort of look at vetting designs publicly in some cases, particularly if they're going to be in very public places.
I'll I'll just follow up with that with those comments that you made is is that it does say throughout this process that council will review for consideration and approval. Um, and we do have a best practice of um, providing updates to council throughout the process. Sometimes if it's something like a signal box before they're fabricated, before they're produced and before we've gone into contract, because we do go, we do an agreement with the we do provide that to council for review, uh, in, you know, in, um, we did that with the mural, we did that with, we do that with the signal boxes. Here's the ten signal boxes that the Arts Commission is recommending moving forward. We usually give you a summary of the artist and and such. So that is a best practice that we'll make sure. It is written in this policy, but we'll make sure that that continues. We did learn our lessons with, um, you know, the the uh, oversight of, um, you know, for instance, uh, Art Commission had a lot of comments on it. So, you know, we did learn our lesson of uh, better oversight on that. And that is, you know, lessons learned throughout. We've learned lots of lessons throughout the public art process. Public art is in the eye of the beholder. What Lonnie might think is fabulous, I might think is odd, what the mayor loves. Uh, Councilmember Bell might think is, you know, you know, so it means it's it's different for everybody. And so again, just having a good process of selection, a good process of review along the way to make sure everybody kind of gets at the end what they know they're going to get, whether they love it or don't. It's still what you expected. So, um, so that's built into here so that council can have that. And that is a public setting because of course council makes those decisions during a council meeting, so.
Yeah, well, I I I appreciate that. I would just, as one council member, I would caution over reliance on the on 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 individual members of the council of being, uh, the best judges of what 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 is our what is artistic? I I mean, we may have some aficionados and we have some people who are yeah, such as myself, that 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 I I wouldn't want to impose my judgment over people that are more knowledgeable.
So noted in the minutes. We're not going to rely on Mr. Branson's judgment. I do I do do think you have what you've articulated, Miss Dodsworth, in section three. You talk about the creation of a design review process and timeline to support project development. I think you can maybe flesh that a little bit, design and construction review process or something like that. But I think you got it there pretty much. The only thing that's a little funky in that last sentence of that page twenty one where it says the Arts Commission is going to approve the artwork under fifteen grand. The council will be briefed for concurrence for any artwork under fifteen grand prior to the work being completed. So I guess my thought is if council didn't give concurrence and it's already been completed.
No, you would do it before it's completed, prior to the work being completed. So that's
But after it's been selected, so the train has left the station and
No, the Arts Commission makes a recog- the Arts Commission makes a recommendation to council. And so something like signal boxes, something that don't necessarily want to have to get on the study session and council agenda and you trust your Arts Commission to make those and they they've done a good job. So those smaller projects and collectively would be over fifteen thousand dollars. We will, we do share with council and say, what do you think? And if there was something on there where somebody missed something and one of our council members looked at it and went, ew, let's have a conversation. We would take, council gets to decide and we would reconsider that or say, okay, you make the decision. Count Arts Commission's making a recommendation. And so if council looks at that and says, I love nine of them, but one of them isn't right, then we can pull that and then do something different. There's usually two or three or four that didn't quite make the cut that then could be moved forward. And I, the council member would probably give us a good reason for that. And maybe it was something we hadn't considered or something we hadn't thought or something we didn't see. Um, so it's a conversation, but yeah, no, it before anything's been created or any council makes the decision. We're just letting you know that the Arts Commission is there to help move those those smaller projects forward and they obviously have a history of doing great work. Yeah, so we want to keep this process going. Well, you have a very busy agenda and so, you know, to get something on there, we wanted uh, but something bigger that's going to have more permanence, that's going to be there for a long, long time. Uh, we want to, you know, of course, have that be something that's more thoroughly vetted by the council, so. And if you had a different dollar amount, we wanted to consider. I mean, those were what came from the Arts Commission. So if council wanted to look at something different, um, certainly provide that direction and we'll add it to your policy.
I don't see any vociferous raising of hands to change the dollar amounts recommended, so I'd go with what you have.
Excellent. The final section is, uh, section seven, the decommissioning of artwork. Uh, City Lakewood reserves the right to decommission artwork for any reason and at the sole discretion of the city to relocate, modify or decommission artwork. In general, this is because maybe the condition or the security of the artwork is no longer sustainable. There's some kind of public safety risk as a result of that. There's excessive maintenance required. It has failures, damaged, repairs not feasible. Um, or if we discovered that the artwork or the theme is discovered to be inauthentic, fraudulent or stolen. So, uh, essentially, we would follow the current surplus policies and, uh, get in touch with the artist. The artist is given the first right of refusal to purchase the artwork back, should they choose to do that. And then probably one of the the third sentence down in this one with no current member of the Lakewood Arts Commission or city employee shall be allowed to bid or purchase the decommissioned artwork within a two-year timeframe of the consideration. And that is essentially to prevent um, somebody intentionally trying to just, you know, decommission the artwork and then yeah.
Decommission a Chihuahua to pick it up.
Right. Yeah, exactly. Yeah. And then, uh, the proceeds from any of those sales uh, will go directly into the City of Lakewood Public Art Fund. So, yeah. And do, yeah, are there any other questions?
Mr. Branson.
And and then, um, going back a number of years and 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 discussions about the commission and one of the roles of the commission was that they were going to be a body that insists us in 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 seeking external funding to fund art. Um, you know, we know, we look at that ball up in Tacoma, it's Arts Commissions are 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 fundraising organizations as well as 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 focused on the on the on the on the art and acquisition in that of itself. And, uh, I I think if we were looking to move forward more robustly, the Arts Commission and its committees that it has established and moved forward to where they they deal with the different realms of art, you know, performing art and performing art going on off. That, uh, when they reorganized themselves, they did not reorganize themselves with a portion of the commission being looked at a a a resource thing over there other than the city's budget, which you you know, I can think of other cities that have enviable public art, uh, collections. Many of them much older than us, okay? And so that that they're there, but they have done that with have these public-private money, uh, in in many cases. And I think that we should a- as a matter of policy, be seeking those kinds of relationships with creating art to be able to do that. I think the last time we really seriously did that was when the Veterans Memorial was constructed. Uh, where where there was a significant amount of 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 public dollars put into that to be able to go then shortly after the city hall was built. Um, and I I think that that in the in the long term, that is a a a a a role that we should maybe be hoping that the Arts Commission can take a greater role in um, rather than relying upon us or staff. And we've had some staff success with that, like with some murals uh, and things of where we've gotten some some outside things to do that. But not for a major piece to do that. And we're in a a period of time of when the Public Works Engineering Department having created all these roundabouts that people are envisioning as places where art could be, okay? Um, and we're, uh, we're looking at Ford Silicon Park, but we're also looking at perhaps acquiring some ownership or 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 rights around the 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 historic Ford Stilicum and the old veteran cemetery to be able to go and do that. Some of those lend themselves, um, to some of the art being funded, some art at those locations being funded in a public partnership to include whatever sort of art we're going to put into the H-borne if that project is raises money successfully to move forward.
I think it's an excellent idea and thought that we, when I was in the Arts Commission, I don't know, fifteen, fourteen years ago, we looked at the creation of a public arts fund. And that might be a section for this policy, creation of a public arts fund. Where the city is the fiscal agent, because the stumbling block for us at the time was the creation of a separate five oh one C three like Puyallupad. We didn't want to do that. So creation of a public arts fund that would enable the Public Arts Commission to seek uh, you know, public-private partnerships through the solicitation of private donations for a selected piece of art for the benefit of the community or something like that, because it would at least enable them to do it with the oversight of the city as a fiscal agent.
We have a public art fund and so that's the fund that the McGavick dollars go into. Well, it's a fund that could, other resources could go into it. If someone donates to the city, then it is a tax deductible donation. So we don't need to create a nonprofit for that. So we do have that. If the council desires that, then when we, um, appoint people to the Arts Commission, then you really need to look at somebody with that kind of expertise, because there is, there is, um, capacity issues on how much time you can spend to do that. We have a very small amount of time dedicated to the Arts Commission. I think we get a lot of bang for our buck. But if the Arts Commission individuals were interested in doing that, there's a lot, maybe there's interest in that now, but that is it does take a lot of time and expertise and the city has to be on top of that to know, um, there are resources out there, but you have to know what you want to build. It's not just let's go find some money and then do something. We have to come collectively with a project or something to do. You know, art in a traffic circle has to be something of substance, so that as you're driving by at thirty-five miles an hour, you see it, like the Lotus Blossom. I think the past practice over the last few years from the Arts Commission perspective is those big expensive projects like the Lotus Blossom or maybe the the Gateway is great. But, um, to do things like the signal boxes or maybe some uh, rotating art project, not just inside city hall, but if we talked about those plinths, it's really much more affordable. It's something small. And that also could be something that's funded by, uh, grants and things. It's just, um, it's it's taking the time to find those grants and to do that, but we have to know what we're what we're buying, so.
I think it's for those larger projects, you know, that if we only have the capacity to budget for, given the money is coming from McGavick to the dedicated public arts line in the budget. We only have the capacity for one every two or three years or whatever it may be. If the Arts Commission wanted to do something with the neighborhood association to do a roundabout of Veterans Drive, for instance, and they knew we didn't have the capacity. We just want to give them the leeway that they could go out and they could have an arts reception at Lakewood Garden and charge admissions with, you know, cooperation and and start getting monies coming in for a dedicated purpose. I think that's all we're looking at, right? Something that gives them the flexibility in a policy that would enable them to do that.
As long as they're being directed by council to do that, because of course you direct their work program, which could be something that, and again, it would have to be based on capacity of the individuals on the Arts Commission to take that on, so.
It would come from their recommendation to do it. And then we'd say, hey, sounds good if you can raise the money.
Sure. I was just, yes, I was just going to add to that. It just sounds like something that we just need to communicate out that, hey, if you're a private, um, resident, someone who lives in Lakewood or beyond and you want to contribute money, we have this fund and it will be taxed. Yeah. You know, what they're doing it for, but I don't think that's anything that's really ever been communicated out. So maybe that's what needs to be looked at. And then, uh, formulating it and how it's probably very simple, I would think, if it's just a donation of funds, but there would have to be some parameters, obviously, on what the funds go for and how all of that kind of stuff. So it does create a little bit more, a a different layer. But I think there might be a few people on the Arts Commission that might be um, a little bit knowledgeable with that. So I don't know, maybe something we could tap into.
Thanks.
What's that? I'd donate to Heartbeat if there was something set up and there was something, a project they wanted to do. Yeah. Anyway, that's a thought to of a section, a very simple language to add, maybe generic language on that. Yeah. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, so if we add a few of these, the comments that we heard tonight, is it ready to come to council for action then in January at some point?
I think so, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So we are going to, uh, move into the latter two. Why don't we take a five-minute recess while Ms. Grimley comes and gets set up to talk about the review of the Reader Board signed proposed locations and thoughts. So why don't we recess for five minutes and come back? The review of the Reader Board signed proposed locations and thoughts, so why don't we recess for five minutes and come back? Okay, so we're back on. I assume we're back on, Madam Clerk, right? We're all good, so proceed with the review of the Reader Board's signed proposed locations with our communications manager, Bryn Grimlin.
All right, well, good evening. Thank you for having me. Um, in the interest of time and knowing you have another presentation, uh, following mine, I'm gonna try and be brief. Um, so I'm going off the assumption that everyone had an opportunity to read and go through everything, so, um, just a quick overview. Uh, the city council allocated three hundred and thirty six thousand dollars in, um, Federal American Rescue Plan Act monies. To purchase and install these electronic reader board signs. Um, if you deduct what we've spent currently on the design services part, which was when they came to you, um, with those proposals. For the different sign designs and the. Holder for the electronic sign, I don't, the casing for it, um, that would be with that co- that cost covered, so, um. The remaining amount from that is about three hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Another cost to just be cognizant of is, um. An estimation of up to about twenty thousand dollars to connect these two conduit, whether that's both electricity and the fiber optics needed. To be able to communicate with it, um, you know, offsite, so through basically a software program or something. Um, and we'll have a better understanding of actual costs once we actually go out to bid and, and get a sense back, because it's a little hard to know at this time. Um, what real, what real costs look like, so, um, the factors that were considered when reviewing the various locations. Were the average daily traffic count location and whether it's at a stoplight or not, um, which obviously if you're at a stoplight, you can. Read things hopefully a little bit better than when you're driving by. Um, competition with other signage, access to right of way for installation and electrical conduit and then the zoning, um. So, uh, we do have one existing sign at the Lakewood Police Station. It is unfortunately, while it looks like it works, it really actually does not. Um, it's hit or miss as to whether it can actually be updated and have new information put on it. The software just almost doesn't work anymore. Um, I've not had experience doing it, but that's what I've been told by the folks at PD. It's, it's largely just not usable anymore as far as updating with information. The, uh, other things that we use, I'm sure you saw them this weekend and leading up to our parade, we have those portable signs, which are the yellow and, or the orange and black ones. Um, we use those to put up either road closure information, event information in those ways. Um, so those are ways that we also communicate with the public. Um, and the locations that we took a look at, uh, were South Tacoma Way at the corner of, um, ninety six, so that's right there at that Pierce Transit Headquarters. They have that nice big green lawn. There's actually a significant amount of right of way space there, um, where a sign could go. Um, Fort Silicon Park at the Silicon Boulevard and eighty seventh Avenue, so two different options there. Bridgeport Way at the Gateway Sign between Lakewood and University Place, as I mentioned before, the Lakewood Police Station. Gravely Lake Drive at Motor Avenue, so right there actually somewhat close to where the public art is that you were just discussing, um, partially. And then Veterans Drive near Vernon, um, and South Tacoma, South Tacoma Way at one hundredth Street at the Gateway Sign. Um, and it would have to somehow be incorporated in with that sign, so we would maybe have to look at moving some things around. Um, there's a table that just takes a look to all those locations with the different factors that were considered to help just present it in a different way. Um. One of the things to be mindful of is there are different readers board signs, so, um, I would use, I'll give kind of two comparisons that I can think of in Lakewood. That I'm sure most are familiar with, so one would be the H and L Produce sign, that's a great. Very visually appealing, almost looks like a television, um, that's a very expensive sign, um, because of the size of the bulbs. And how close they are together and how crystal clear they are, the LED bulbs, um, and that would be one that would be the full color, has the R, what's called RGB. Um, the other option would be like what we see at the Lakewood YMCA here on Lakewood Drive, which is the black with the orange and that would be considered monochrome. So, um. Obviously, you can imagine something that looks more like a television is probably gonna be a lot more expensive. Again, I can't provide you with dollar figures at this time. Because we need to do the RFP to, to find out, you know, what the final cost would be, but that just gives you an idea of what we would be looking at. Um, kind of the range from high to low, if you will, in appearance, um, and then also, uh, how close the bulbs are together. That gives you clearer or maybe a little blurrier, and that was one of the attachments, just to give you an example of the different, just three different ones to, to see. So it's, the recommendation is to, um, replace the Lakewood Police Department sign because it largely is not usable anymore. Um, if we needed to be able to get. Information onto that sign in emergency, we would have a lot of trouble and someone would have to physically be at the station to do that work. Um, whereas current software today would allow us, uh, with a new sign to be wherever we are and have the software either on a computer or a phone even. To communicate information out, and then the second location that's recommended is South Tacoma Way at the Pierce Transit Corner, um, where that large piece of grass. Is, uh, and available conduit is right there as well as, um, the right of way space, so next steps are for you all to. Um. Have your discussion and, uh, select your preferred locations and then, um. We would move forward with the request for proposal, which would give us more definitive answers about some of the things that I just unfortunately can't provide for you tonight, so.
Councilmember Anderson.
What are the advantages that. Replacing the sign at the police station has over placing a sign at. The, uh, at Fort Silicon Park, given that the traffic count at Fort Silicon Park is. Greater in there, that would provide greater geographic dispersion.
I think one of the advantages is the conduit and everything's already there, so the belief would be we wouldn't have to do much if any. Um, utility hookup because it's already existing, uh, it's not to say we wouldn't need to maybe do a little bit, because I think that sign went in. A decade ago, if not more, I think twenty fourteen, fifteen-ish, yeah, so ten years, um, so that would be one, uh, one benefit there.
Yeah, because it, it, this, I always, irrespective of traffic count, I always thought that Fort Silicon Park has events. And. People identify it with the city and they do it at the police station too, so it has, the station has that advantage over. City Hall doesn't have any traffic, but those kind of things where it's at a city location, the city's telling you this, it's kind of the message you got. You know, Farmer's Market tomorrow.
Concerts in the park.
Concert in the park. It's the place where the events are.
Well, you're also gonna have a huge amount of traffic going to and from the new Western State Hospital with employees and traffic, so there's a lot of opportunity there.
So anyway, that was. That was my thought. I'd like to see a way that something could be there, maybe you can get. The college to up their budget, put a big reader board in.
Well, there seems like there's a lot of electrical work going on now, isn't it a chance maybe to get whatever conduit we need in? There's tons of electrical work going on right now with those massive light standards and. You know, under in the ground, Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor, um, I agree with you, uh, Councilmember Anderson, I think that Fort Silicon Park would be a really good. Place for getting out more information to the community and then the other location you said was on South Tacoma Way. Would that be considered? I know it's in the International District, but I would like one of the signs to be in an entry point to Lakewood. As a welcome of here's all the information, here's things that are happening here, something like, maybe even like the Bridgeport Exit. Seems a little bit more viable than the South Tacoma Way, um, I think there's a lot more traffic there, plus it just. I don't, but I don't know the logistics about where it could go, but that would be.
The, the new sign. Placing from the goalpost, uh, wannabe sign.
So I just think that places like that are very welcoming, they're very inviting, they say right away, welcome to the city, here's what's happening, here's some information. So that, that's my thoughts.
Councilmember Laura Sal. Uh, I agree with, uh, Councilmember Bell, exp- expanding on that, I'd be curious to see what the traffic numbers are like for. The Bridgeport Exit, uh, the end of five twelve and the Gravely Exit, I'm sure Gravely is probably not as much, but the other two, it'd be good to see. What those look like, so we can make a data-driven decision on that possibility, uh, and as I understand it. We have a, a budget, but that doesn't necessarily limit us to only two if they come in at a lower cost, so.
Right. Councilmember, did you have a follow-up, Councilmember Bell and then?
I did, sorry, and to play off of that is, I do think that it's more vision, people are used to seeing higher definition images. They're not, they don't want to see the Public Works Orange Reader Board that we roll out, so my preference would be is to go with the high definition, the full color. That is just what we're accustomed to and I think it's standard and we would look, um, like we were not very. On trend and progressive if we went with the yellow letters.
Yes, I. Understand this is not an easy puzzle to, 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 to put together, to, to be able to go and do that. I, uh. I agree that I would like to see a solution that even though the sign at the police station is. Older and it, uh, is, it, 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 it won't do all the things we're hoping the new signs will do. I think that the. Current sign at the police station that is, operates with about ninety percent of its content being. Public safety related, which is a little bit different than what we're hoping to have. These signs to be a, a broad spectrum of different communications to do. So I, 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 I'd be supportive of moving that, leaving that sign there. Uh, it, it, at some point in time, there, there maybe needs to be some upgrade, but I think that. And leaving it in the hands of the police department with respect to content and how they, how they do that. Uh, is, uh, keeps it as a public safety element to be able to go and do that. Uh, where to place them, uh, I, I, I would just say that I, 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 I wouldn't want to place something. Co-locate one with one of our gateway signs, okay, I, I, I think that, that detracts from the, the piece to do that, but. Uh, someplace where there is a significant amount of traffic, uh, entering the city, so that lends itself to. Coming up the hill on Bridgeboard from, from University Place, uh, it, uh, I, I'd stay away from the five twelve intersection. Because, um, if you don't put it on something that where there is kind of a direct thing, this. Could end up being a. Distraction to drivers and, and, and that five twelve intersection with South Tacoma Way and Pacific Highway is already confusing. Uh, to be able to go and do that, uh, along with the fact that we've got. Red light cameras there and, 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 and other things to be able to go through. Um, but my, my other question was, the, the, these signs would be considered digital signs. So, um. As we, as we, are, are, are we looking at whether we might have to make some changes to our code? That have some restrictions on digital signs, for instance, that don't allow animation, um, you know, only s- static. Uh, displays and, and that limit, limit brightness to. Certain a bit over ambient light levels and things. I'm okay with making those, th- th- those changes, but I don't want to put in signs that, 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 that are clearly not quite in compliance with the code. While we're telling businesses.
Are we exempt at all or no from our code and look at it?
No, we wouldn't be exempt, um, and I did talk with Community Economic Development a little bit about it, so, you know, just as a preliminary sort of. Would this even be allowed? Um, and that was part of the review is having them look at the proposed locations, um, and so in part, one of the locations that was mentioned. On Gravely, originally we had looked at Gravely and Nynza, but to do that, it was gonna take some additional work potentially around zoning and. Um, realistically with the roundabout as well right now, it just, it didn't make sense, um, but we will make sure that everything is either in conformance. Or if there were need to be any changes that council would be.
Yeah, 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 or, or bring us a proposed amendment to the code, that, that, so that we're, uh, we're, we're. We're, 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 we're compliant to, to be able to, don't go and do that, but, um. Uh, you, you know, you know, I had. It's out of the list of things, I think, well. Fort Silicon Park might be, uh, uh, along Silicon Boulevard is, 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 is a high traffic thing, although it's. It would be. You, you know, I, I, I think there are, there, there are other places that traffic counts may indicate that we s- see more people entering the city. Doing, um. In the, in your presentation, you have a, a thing that says, it, the slide is, the, the. Pixel pitch comparison. But the images are all signs on wheels. Are, are we not looking for a sign on wheels, we're looking for a, a permanent installation, so then, then the code says. The controllers have to be on the same site as the sign. That's what our code says if it's a digital sign, um, i- i- that, that may be, uh, an element of the code that we'd have to change.
Mr. Bokey, did you?
So a couple of things about, about the sign are, because I go to that page that. Mr. Grand Services is talking about, how big of a sign, how tall are we talking about?
Nothing has been defined, um, but I think the assumption was, I mean, obviously we have to remain within the conformance of code and what would be allowed. I think the assumption was something that would be relatively closer to the ground, so in the diagram that you have on your screen, um, one of those attachments, the yellow one. Um, not trying to get high up into the air, um, especially based on the locations where they were recommended.
Because I, I think the signs do best. It's, it seems to me when they're in front of something that the city owns, um, and that's just the stand, you're right. That's just how these signs work, ma- you know, maybe the one on South Tacoma Way works because it's in a spot where there's a lot. Um, I want to be really careful about Fort Silicon Park and, and I get it that it's a, it's a good location for the sign. But we're really loving Fort Silicon Park to death because we don't have many parks. And so we just keep funneling all our energy and promises of anybody who wants anything into Fort Silicon Park. And I was supportive of the baseball field, I'm supportive of the H barn. And then we have the Niskoalys who want to be involved in Fort Silicon Park and now we want to put a sign in Fort Silicon, it's like, when does this end? And it never ends because again, we don't have any parks, um, so I want to be. I, I, I want us to be very thoughtful about if it ends up at Fort Silicon Park, that it, it is the land, the, what do they call these landmark ones or. Um, and not tall, um. I, I, and I don't know about the South Tacoma Way location either, I, because I just don't go there very much, right, so. But that's me. So I don't, I don't want to take my issues or none going over there very often. So, um, yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll leave it at that, but I would lower better. Um, and then, but look for locations that, you know, people are gonna see. So, thanks.
And that's what we're here to decide. Councilmember Laura Sella.
Expanding on what councilmember Bokey said, uh, at the uh, Public Safety Advisory Meeting this past week, uh, the police department did some traffic studies in front of parks. So there is recent data on traffic counts. Uh, and one of the places they looked at was across from Ward's Lake Park. So we might consider that as well. Uh, there is a significant amount of traffic that comes in along eighty-fourth. So something to think about.
Okay. So just to give Ms. Grimley some guidance as best we can, I, I've heard several indicate support at least for a Fort Silicon Park uh, location entrance or the eighty-seventh right away or whatever. So I would be in favor of that, but I, I am one. I hear Mr. Anderson, councilmember Bell. I think councilmember Laura Sella, deputy mayor. So it looks like that is one of the locations. My only concern somewhat consistent with Mr. Bokey is we don't unduly obscure the nice sign we have there, right? Somehow. So it doesn't obscure that because it's a nice lit sign at night. It looks good. So. Uh, but I do think it makes great sense to have that as a location because of all the activities that are going on. It's identified as a major city asset and all sorts of information is leaned from that. The second one, I was just gonna ask, I know it's not here, but we mentioned it tonight, and that is the Bridgeboard, uh, way intersection with South Tacoma Way. That's the one that's being rebuilt. I don't know if it's a fait accompli because that sign's already been ordered to be introduced there, but it hasn't been constructed, right?
The signs, yeah, it's, I will say that was a location that was reviewed and discussed. Um, but there was concern um, about how many times that sign has been hit.
Right.
Um, and I know currently there's big boulders there and there's been additional, um, hardscape that's been put in to try to stop cars.
Right.
But I don't know how confident we are frankly, that that's going to work. And that has unfortunately, and that would just be the worry is uh, because I agree for all the reasons you stated, but um, if an electronic sign gets hit, um.
Yeah, it's spending.
It's pretty expensive. So.
So we've got that entrance in the city for Silicon Park, Silicon, people come down, you pee. What does council think about the ninety-sixth, uh, location is the other sort of entrance, South Tacoma Way ninety-six, Mr. Anderson?
You know, I think it indicates that we have enough right away there. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, which one location?
In, in, Tim said, okay, we do have enough right of way at the ninety-six location.
Correct, yes.
One of the things about that, we're looking at basically a soundtrack for the Pierce Transit Headquarters. And, uh, that is a kind of a functional gateway, not the actual gateway to the city, but it doesn't uh, compete with the gateway sign. It, it, there's not a lot of visual pollution there.
Right.
Because Pierce Transit has some open space and, and the configuration of the improvements across the street. So I think that has some advantages from the what I call readability standpoint. Uh, it's also not a place where people are going very fast and let's say avoiding police going to ninety-six and freeway. But on South.
A good, a good option.
Way, I think that's a decent option.
What about that versus gravelly lake and motor avenue? Uh, if that gets redeveloped into something, perhaps park-like, we don't know yet. Uh, but obviously we're trying to attract a bunch of activity there. Gravelly Lake gets a lot of traffic. It is kind of an entrance. It's visible from that three sort of intersection corner. That would be another top opportunity, I think. What do you guys think about that one? Vis a vis ninety-six and South Tacoma Way. I'm kind of up. Would be nice. Councilmember Bell?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to get a point of clarification. We're talking about it being lower and I understand that. Are you thinking of some sort of shell around it that um, makes it a little bit more substantial than just a sign? And something that would, you know, branded as to this is the city of Lakewood. You can see that very clearly and it's like a really big TV in there and they're, they're lower, but they're up a little bit high.
Yes. Um, so when, um, when we had the consultants back, I think it was a month or two ago and they presented the sign designs, one of those that they showed you all was the casing for an electronic reader board sign. So it would be, so if, if we did need to replace a screen or something, the casing would remain there and we would just be putting the pieces in and out, if you will. Um, so it, it wouldn't just be a screen. We would have the larger decorations. So City of Lakewood, it's very clear that it's the city's sign.
So good point. Councilman Brand Center.
Well, you know, I, I think that this is, all sites have advantages that, 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 that I think that there are some advantages to the ninety-sixth and South Tacoma Way site is, it is a as councilman Anderson says, it's a it's a de facto gateway, uh, that, that it is, uh, um, people coming off of five twelve who are heading towards the International District would, would pass through to that. It, 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 it gets a, a lot of traffic that would come along ninety-sixth entering the city. Being, being, being able to go and do that, that it's an area where there, there isn't anything there right now, other than the occasional Pierce Transit temporary sign that's, that's there that, that makes it highly visible. And because of where it is, it makes it something that's really suitable to some multi-lingual messaging, uh, to be able to go and do. The other thing about South Tacoma Way is if you were trying to look at something on South, along South Tacoma Way that might be attract people entering the city from the north, that we are in a, in a process of where we have funding to redo South Tacoma Way from the North City Boundary there by the BMI on up to eighty-fourth street or, or that. And that, that's still in a design phase of where Public Works Engineering may be able to look at where in, in, in the design of those, in those improvements along that, that corridor, they may be able to see a position where a sign could be incorporated into the, uh, the sidewalk, streetscape pavement, uh, things, things that are there. It's not an entrance of the, of the city that we've programmed to have a formal big gateway sign. You know, it still has one of the small blue and white signs that says, welcome to the city of Lakewood. To be able to go and do that. But if you want to target that area, you could, there's, there's time to for engineering to look at figuring where along that route to do that, even if it would be somewhere along the intersection of eighty-fourth and South Tacoma Way, which is a significant entry uh, range to, to the city to, 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 to do that. So, you know, we, we maybe don't have to be that specific. Right now, it'd be subject to discussing with the Public Works Engineering folks to be able to go and do that. Uh, I think the sign at, on Gravelly Lake Drive by, by Motor Avenue, uh, we'll, we'll get read, uh, you know, and, and seen. So it, it, it could be a very effective location for a sign to be able to go and do that. Uh, but we're only going to buy two.
Well, maybe we have an order of merit that if we had, based on the bid that we go out for, you know, if we had enough for a third one, where would we put the third one? Would we say, uh, I would say Motor Avenue and Gravelly if we had money for a third? What do you folks think? Yeah. Sounds like we've got consensus for that, Ms. Grimley. Somewhere over by the Colonial Plaza Motor Avenue thing, because we're gonna be, the thing that's nice about that potentially is you've got this big road project that we're doing. It's going to bring pedestrian-friendly orientation from people all the way from Silicon Boulevard down Ardmore and into the city. That property at some point before we all die is going to get redeveloped into something. Uh, hopefully, and, uh, you know, it's going to have likely housing and some other amenities. So it might actually be a very vibrant, another catalyst to something. So, Councilmember Laura Sella.
Uh, in terms of the second one beyond Fort Silicon, uh, again, I'd be interested in seeing the traffic data. Ninety-sixth South Tacoma Way, I like Silicon Boulevard in South Tacoma Way is a really busy intersection, catches all the people that come down eighty-fourth. They'd be coming from the Ward's Lake Park area. Uh, that's a busy intersection already. There's a lot of light there.
I don't know if we have any right of way there, though.
Yeah.
That's the problem. Yeah. Silicon Boulevard.
I don't know how much there is. I will, I would need to look at that and I will, I can look for that as well as the traffic counts. I will say, um, the other competition is all the other signs. So that is a very busy, and that was one of the things as we looked at South Tacoma Way. Where were we still in a high-traffic area that didn't have a lot of other signs that we'd be fighting with? Um, that's why we looked up at, um, as I know you mentioned, five twelve, not there, but just the next one down at a hundredth at the gateway there. That is an option except for cars traveling. I think that's north. My directions are current there. Um, don't stop. So that was one consideration is they're going to be going through unfortunately faster than they should. Um, but I, I will look at the, um, right of way allocation and I, I believe we already have the traffic council.
Now, the one thing that's nice about, uh, gravelly and Motor Avenue is we did all that electrical work recently. For the lighting up of the trees. So we've got conduit there. We've got the power pole and everything else there.
I do think that.
So that's helpful that that work has been done. Any other comments? Does that give you a flavor for the top three? It sounds like.
So what I'm hearing is Fort Silicon Park, number one, South Tacoma Way at Pierce Transit Headquarters is number two, and then gravelly at Motor Avenue, Colonial Plaza vicinity as a third. A third.
Yeah.
Your, your concern is the right.
Correct. We'd like to use existing right of way. So we're not having to purchase or.
Sure.
Mr. Anderson.
I won't be here to vote on it, but one thing uh, you might want to consider is selling advertising on site, getting hold of an outdoor advertising agency that handles electronic billboards. Eons ago, after Tacoma Dome was opened in nineteen eighty-three. As a young associate, I wrote a contract with the city of Tacoma on behalf of then Puget Sound Bank where they had rights to have their logo or some message displayed on the freeway sign for twenty years. Bought the sign, didn't cost Tacoma anything. Turned out to be a great deal for the bank. But that's the economics of the thing. The point is there's a value to the image, sure, based on how many people go by. It, it might be marketable and help mitigate the cost.
Absolutely. Get more signage. Well, very good. Why, I just want to give you some feedback. I sent it out to, uh, someone I know who does a ton of large commercial signs. And the comments, uh, were that it looks like we're looking at five by eight at the most. Based on city code at those locations. You, you might find somebody to help work on the specs before you send it out for an RFP. Uh, because the key is setting the specs right for the right use. And the comment was, the product shown in the materials is Daktronic Display. Said it's one of the three major brands, but the worst choice, overpriced by about thirty percent. So if we're looking to try to stretch our dollars, might be worth talking. I can give you yeah, I can, I can give you some information. Uh, but that's the key is sounds like building the specs for the location and then going out for the RFP and sourcing the best for the right price.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Yes, very good. Okay, good. So now we can, uh, move on to establishing a creative district here in the city of Lakewood. Mr. Vargas is gonna make it happen. Just so we can make sure we got one mic that works, maybe those of us who aren't using will go ahead and turn it off real quick. Mike, we'll hit, hit your button there real quick so we can make sure, Mr. Vargas.
Yeah. So, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilmembers. Michael Vargas here to go over um, a presentation and memo, uh, prepared by our municipal intern for the summer, Brandon Chung. Um, I think it's important to note, Brandon did a really good job of compiling all this information for us tonight. Um, is unable to join us, leave its, um, finals week over, you dub. So I will be here in his stead. So I'll be starting on page forty-two of your packet tonight.
And probably just a good overview, Mr. Vargas, because we can, we've read it, but yeah, give us, give us what you think are the salient points here.
Yeah, completely. So just to set the background here, um, City of Lake was looking at ways to enhance our downtown area. Uh, vis a vis, we have created our downtown sub-area plan. So really looking at a creative district as one more tool in the toolbox to help out in this development effort. So what is a creative district? Uh, bit of background, the Creative Districts program was launched in January twenty eighteen by the Washington State Arts Commission, Arts Washington. Arts Washington is a state agency formed by the Washington State Legislature back in the sixties. Its mission statement is to nurture and support the role of the arts in the lives of all Washingtonians. So to give a bit more structure at what exactly is a creative district, uh, it's the vine. It's a land area designated by a local government in accordance with that RCW. That contains either, and that's important, a hub of cultural facilities, creative industries or arts-related businesses. Or multiple vacant properties in close proximity that would be a suitable for redevelopment into a creative district. So I think that's an important sort of two-part definition because we can either overlay a creative district over very established cultural and arts core or one that has potential. And perhaps our downtown would be one. Um, but example of cities I've adopted and implemented a creative district would be Olympia, Edmonds and Issaquah. And so this map here sort of gives a lay of the land of creative districts, fairly new program, but we see the ones in red are certified creative districts. And the ones in blue are really in early-stage planning and they are concentrated in the sound area here, some neighbors such as, uh, Puyallup there. So I think it's important to go over the state of Washington's creative economy, since that's really what a creative district is trying to tap into development-wise. Uh, Washington's creative economy is vast and growing to include some major sectors such as the creative technologies, music and performing arts and visual arts, which we traditionally think of as arts and culture sectors. Um, and Washington is actually a leader in this space, uh, nationwide. Uh, so we lead the nation and the West, after the United States, uh, in terms of value added and industry earnings via our creative economy. According to the Western State Arts Federation, um, and we'll, we'll go over a graphic in a sec. But to give a flavor of how large we are, the creative economy actually in Washington State, uh, actually grew during the pandemic to seventy-one billion dollars in industry earnings in twenty twenty-one. And that's what this slide here, um, uh, further, further expands upon. So these are twenty twenty numbers, the most recent by Arts Washington. Um, and this really gives a flavor, uh, perhaps the most important, um, statistic on this page is really there's two of them. First, the top ten creative jobs, um, as defined as what counts as a creative job. Uh, we have software development. Um, post-secondary, uh, teachers, photography, web developers, writing and music. Um, and the second important statistic is that the creative economy makes up eight point seven percent of Washington's GDP. Which, checking online, this is the highest proportion in the United States. So I think the moral of the story here is that the creative economy, um, there's a lot of opportunity to really develop that and tap into that, especially here in Lakewood. So, creative district outcomes, uh, what are some of the goals of creative district outlined by Arts Washington? Um, attract artists, startups and creative businesses to your district, um, really helps turn communities. Um, what communities are already doing in terms of culture activities into economic growth. So sort of linking the sort of arts and culture development within a community with that economic growth component, um, sort of the intersection of two is what creative districts all about. Um, also state certification endorses creative activities in the community through certification. Uh, promote a community's creative identity, sort of building that brand, identity, character of a district. Um, in turn, grow jobs in the creative sector, um, also increase tourism and bring new visitors to our city. Um, and the last two, um, are really sort of new. Um, so create opportunities for affordable housing. It's interesting, Arts Washington is looking into sort of adding an affordable housing angle into creative districts. It's interesting, Arts Washington is looking into sort of adding an affordable housing angle into creative districts um via. Looking into what um sort of mixed-use development, such that we have artists sort of living and working. In the same space slash building, so that's sort of an interesting angle into, you know, how to incorporate affordable housing into economic growth. And arts and culture, and also setting the stage, if needed, uh for redeveloping historic community assets. If they happen to be in your creative district. So, here's some more program benefits, uh one of the main benefits being a part of the creative district or having a creative district is the funding. Um so Arts Washington, um they provide a cash grant for newly certified districts, uh it's a one-to-one cash match. Up to five thousand dollars to really kickstart uh your implementation of, you know, um initiatives within your creative district. Um Arts Washington will also provide technical support, grant funding um in terms of assisting and implementing your creative district. And what I left out here is that there's also a capital grant uh component, so Arts Washington historically gave. Out about fifty thousand, up to fifty thousand dollar capital grants to really build up infrastructure within your creative districts. That might mean, you know, sort of enhancing perhaps a cultural center within your district, um or perhaps um. Um more better sidewalks or more sidewalks in your creative district, those are some examples I found in um jurisdictions. Um but I've also heard that within the latest um funding cycle, that that grant. Um capital grant component has been up, up, increased to up to two hundred thousand. So it's sort of adding some more teeth within that capital um grant component of a creative district and. And is expected to continually sustain that moving forward, so again, it's a fairly young program and the state is investing more into it. Um some other program benefits include marketing, uh promotion of create, creative districts. Arts Washington will help out with sharing the stories and successes over our creative district uh to their audiences, both regionally, nationally. And a really um cool sort of component of this would be the wayfinding signage, um so in conjunction with WashDOT and a bit of cost sharing. We are able to get a creative district signage um on our state freeway um exits. Probably seen one in Olympia um heading into their downtown, so something like that we could do. And also, there's a data and impact analysis um component here, Arts Washington is contracting with the Western States Arts Federation. Um to really provide some more backend um data support in terms of their creative vitality suite. It's an online platform that lets us examine our creative economic, economy data, so that would help in terms of economic indicators. Is our creative district growing in terms of number of jobs, um and also businesses? Um so we'll be able, so we'll be, we will be able to access um that, that program as well. And some additional program benefits, like I discussed, Arts Washington is looking into. Um researching support into real estate development tools to try to look at that sort of mixed-use. Artists, living space and maker space component, um perhaps there's some affordable housing tools. Um that, that they were, they're looking into and we could utilize. Um and also, finally, sort of the networking, if we are to create a creative district here, we will be part of a small but growing community. Of other creative districts in Washington, we'll be able to share successes, sort of build upon each other's work there. So, what makes an applicant eligible for a creative district? Um sort of a multifaceted definition here, um we need a structured entity. Representing a community located in Washington State that's purposefully vague, because it can include a municipal government. Uh perhaps a designated downtown authority, such as sort of a Main Street or Downtown Association, that sort of flavor. Um or a five oh one C three nonprofit along those lines. Um and this structured and, or a structured entity representing an area, if we were already to have a cultural district established. Um and that organization should have a, a minimum twenty thousand dollar operating budget. Um and if it's not a municipal entity, it should have the city's good graces to represent the, to represent the district. For example, the bottom there, an advisory committee of a city council may serve as the administrative body of a creative district. I.e. perhaps the Lakewood Arts Commission. Additional minimum eligibility, um the creative district should be a designated contiguous geographic area. Um recognized by the city, it should be walkable and or easily navigable. Um should have a clearly defined concentration of artistic, cultural activities. Um and or one to two primary arts-related industries in the region, such as visual arts, performance arts, um perhaps some. As they define it, perhaps some shopping, restaurants, that sort of deal. Um it should have a clearly defined arts and cultural identity, um and sort of the more administrative um. Eligibilities we just covered, um it should also, um we should demonstrate that we have broad community buy-in for the design. Designation as a creative district, and to that, to that point, we should have partnership agreements among entities to help facilitate activities. Within a creative district. Um but a key one here is that we would need a strategic plan for the creative district, covering three to five years of. Activity and that, that is required within the application. Um again, we will have a formal site visit from the creative district program staff, staff to really evaluate the viability of the creative district. And data collection as well, we'd have to submit reports about um economic growth within the area, which we will get help on. So, kind of skipped to the punchline here. Let's look at the Lakewood downtown area qualifications for a creative district, you know, would this downtown sub-area really be a good candidate for one? Well, in the realm of art and cultural activities here, we have quite, quite a few things going on, right? We have the Colonial Plaza. Um which is really, you know, been invested in over the years and really the city has ramped up um programming there in terms of public events and culturally like programming. Um we also have city events outright throughout town center proper, if you will, such as the holiday parade of lights we just did. Um we're also seeing art receptions here at City Hall, sort of congregating artists around, getting them all in one place. Um and also other public art displays around, um which could include, you know, art wraps as well as the new. Um public art we installed on Colonial Plaza. Now, for the creative economy businesses here, uh we do have the Lakewood Playhouse at Colonial Plaza, also the Lakewood History Museum. We have the AMC Theater, Music and Art Store and a variety of small business restaurants and, and shopping as well. This is an overview to how to create a certified district, the first step would be to gather a community planning team. Uh this is really sort of a steering committee, there's lots of forums to do this, um but it should really be comprised of artists. Um stakeholders within this process, such as artists and local business owners, representatives from the city. Any associations with the downtown, um and school districts, developers and community members. So this um sort of steering committee would be tasked with creating the strategic plan. Um so that would be the next step, create a three-to-five-year strategic plan, sort of outlining the goals and objectives that we would like to see. In the creative district. And we, again, we would have some technical assistance at that step as well. Third step would be to apply for the creative district certification, and if granted, begin uh the programming. And start implementing that um within the creative district. So, that's a big question, would be how does this interface with our downtown sub-area plan? Um I thought this would be useful to sort of delineate, um for example, we have a list of action items within the downtown sub-area plan. How would the outcomes of the creative district um interface with them? Um is, as you can see across a variety of category of action items within the downtown sub-area plan, including economic development. Housing, community partnerships, there's, there's quite a lot of interfacing and, and synergy there, um just to go over the first one there. In our downtown sub-area plan, we have identify and implement incentives that would encourage new businesses to locate in the downtown. And a creative district would, would help out in that degree. Moving on here.
This reminds me of convention centers. It's a neat thing and everybody wants to have one, but there are only so many conventions, and why would you come to a particular location? And you showed us a map earlier that had dots all over the place. If I'm creative casting and I cast bronze statues, or I'm creative coding and I do computer programming. I'm where I am, I can do my work where I am. What's the incentive for me to come to Lakewood, and if there is some incentive, why would I come here instead of Puyallup or Wenatchee or Seattle? Uh there's a lot of expense and a lot of work that goes into this, and I don't see anything at all. That would incentivize a creative business to come to Lakewood. So why would we want to do it? I mean, it's, it's a lot of work at something outside our core competency and. I, I have yet to see anything that would entice a business to come.
It's apparently new thing, so I don't know if we've got anecdotal evidence from the other jurisdictions yet, but Mister Brand Center, I hear you. We only get five grand on a.
Yeah, yeah, I, 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 I. I don't see the benefit of chasing five thousand dollars and doing all of this work. That uh a- a- at the same time cluttering up. The go- the goals and the, and the things that we have that with our downtown area plan, a sub, the sub-area plan. You know, that's put in place with, with, with the idea of in twenty years, but the focus is on jobs and housing. That we already have amongst ourselves within the city. There's some momentum and some desire to create the arts and, and, and facilitate arts community, but we're looking to do it. Broadly throughout the community. Um this is just too much work that could get in the way of other things involved in the, in the, in, in, in. Making the sub-area plan work. Um that, and that we can do some things, for instance, we're planning on looking for some federal money to. Uh to fund getting the Green Street Loop uh going, which can be a. Then a, then a route along which some arts-type things could do, but we don't need this to do that, or at least not now. Um to, to, to be able to uh go and do that, so there isn't a lot that I see being offered by the state here. That at the right time, with the right opportunity, we can do ourselves. Um and to do all of this upfront work and get people to sign into things, to chase five thousand dollars. That we'd have to spend our own five thousand dollars to get. Is um, I, I, I just don't think it's worth the, our effort, our staff's effort, and um. I don't think that we want to force the community into compressing our arts focus into a single small area.
Mister Lorsell. Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, Mister Brand Center, and from my perspective. Unless this is a prerequisite to unlocking other funds in the future. That we have to jump on now, I don't see the benefit to it, you did mention a two-hundred-thousand-dollar capital grant that could come as well. Um in addition to the five thousand, that might be something to consider, but uh yeah, I, I hear what you're saying.
We know of other cities, I see dots on the map, but have they successfully applied for, created their, their district and have they received funding?
Yeah, so I've actually um reached out to Issaquah and Olympia, now granted, they already have a very established or creative core. So sort of interfacing this with their um, you know, sort of um. Programming there, if you will, and that, and their artistic community, it was, it was a pretty seamless integration, so. Um but they have a, have experience with applying for that sort of capital um grant, and they, they. Since they were some of the first, back then it was capped at around fifty thousand, but they were successful in obtaining funding. Um I believe one community used funding for um improving sidewalks in front of the theater. For example, sort of increase that frontage, make it safer, ADA accessible, um and also upgrade, helping out in a capital campaign. For I believe a cultural center, that was upgrading their facilities as well. Uh but then, and then again, their downtown development, you know, put a finer point on it, it was sort of further along, if you will. And again, um to skip to the, if you will, recommendation here. We do have some internal costing here to sort of start a um creative district, so it will take staff time for sure. Um perhaps also depending on how we implement developing the strategic plan, also consultant. So call it fifty thousand for the strategic plan, around thirty-three thousand of internal staff time to create. A creative district strategic plan, so that's sort of the upfront cost, if you will, ongoing costs, of course, depending how you implement it. Um but it's recommended that we look at um applying and establishing a creative district within the twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six. By a new budget and having the Lakewood Arts Commission take the lead on that in terms of being an advisory body. Um so the recommendation is to wait, if you will, um till we're farther along a couple of years. Um but again, you know, taking into consideration where we are and implementing the downtown sub-area plan, this is something else to consider as well.
Well, the beautiful thing is we don't have to make a decision tonight, right?
Yeah.
Council member, or excuse me, Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, my mind went totally different from what you were saying, because I looked at creative economy. And I thought that would, people that are entrepreneurs, that would be attracted to them, that's what. That's why I looked at that, not that we have to get on it right away, but that's how I saw that.
Now, if the state was smart, uh they would grant some sort of exemption for state B and O tax. Every business that came to a creative district properly established by municipality, now that would be. An incentive, you know, to at least get them off the ground. We don't have B and O tax in Lakewood, but the state certainly collects their fair share, and that might be an incentive, so maybe. Something to talk about with our legislators and say, hey, this is a wonderful program, but maybe you might think of some other tools to make it more of an incentive. For economic development activity, because I know small businesses would love that, you know, if they get a little bit of a leg up. So, anyway, it doesn't sound like we're completely against it in the future, it sounds like sometimes we don't necessarily want to invest resources now. Uh until there's a bigger carrot at the end of the stick.
I, I think there has to be some in- incentive, like you, if you did away with, say, was two percent B and O tax. Could be a hundred percent of the profit, people don't realize unless they pay it. Though the, the negative impact that that has on a business with marginal profit. And so uh that would be a real incentive for a, a marginal economic effort. That's creative and hopes to grow to, to come and start up somewhere, so you're exactly right.
Good, maybe something for the policy manual next time around. Any other thoughts or comments, Mister Lorsell?
I did find it interesting that software development was considered one of the creator pieces, and we certainly have a, a lot of that in our region. So that could sway things quite a bit, so.
Well, it's, it's interesting, because we look at all these incentives to get housing, right, the M F T E and all these other incentives, and we want. Try to bring people in, we gotta figure out tools to, to make it happen, so anyway, more to follow, I appreciate the update. We appreciate the update and uh thank the intern for his good work, and uh it's well thought out, so appreciate that. Well, very good, so as we discussed last time, we've got a couple of meetings set this week. December thirteen is our special meeting, starting at six P M. As well as six P M on the following day, December fourteen, for the two special meetings to discuss our state legislative agenda. On the thirteenth and the council legislative agenda on the fourteenth, so.
Mister Mayor, are both those here?
Yes.
At six P M.
Six P M. So Mister Caulfield, the floor is yours for your report.
Uh thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council members, I'd like to introduce our city attorney to give you an update on your city council rules and procedures. As it relates to public comments as a follow-up to your council meeting uh from last Monday evening, and uh. That's, that's the only update I have this evening, so without further ado, the city attorney.
Great.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Member Members of the Council, Heidi Walker, your city attorney. Here to discuss with you um, the council rules of procedure. As you are aware, we had um. Quite an array of comments last Monday at the council meeting during the public comment session. And what you've no doubt subsequently learned, if you've listened to the news at all, is. There was no originality whatsoever to those comments, they were uh, prevalent in many a public meeting. And uh, the real question is. Uh, which jurisdictions seem to be jumping in response and which jurisdictions need seem to be staying the course with their business? And what's been prepared for you, and as I understand it, because. You know, you hear people say you should think before you hit send, well, I needed to think to actually hit send. Because I apparently failed to send this on Friday afternoon when it was prepared. And you haven't had a lot of opportunity to review it, but um, in addition to sending it out this morning, you have a hard copy before you. And we started with a a table, um, one of the things we discussed. Uh, as we were working on this, is that this council has uniformly over the years, and you even expressed it on Monday night. Uh, express the desire to hear from your citizens. And that's regardless of whether they're happy or sad or mad or want to bring you something you've never heard about before. This council has always sort of thrown the doors open and said, all comers, come on in and tell us what we need to work on. And the desire to do that can be inhibited. By the desire to um. Base any content focused restriction on people and so as not constructive as some of those comments might. Seem to have been, you can see in the document that we've provided for you that we we really struggled between the risk of thwarting free speech. And the risk of quelling the interest some of your legitimate citizens who have concerns right here in your own neighborhood might be bringing to you. I would be happy to answer any questions, but this may be a time for you all to simply discuss what we've brought to you.
Well, I'm gonna lead off by saying exactly what you've said, which is already in our council rules, perhaps needs to be emphasized, which is. Public comment is welcome, provided it pertains to matters related to city business. And to the extent the comments veer off of that, and sometimes I have to tell you. It's tough to know when a commenter starts down the path until you get further down the path. But I think reviewing the M S R C materials and looking at some of the case law. I think we can say to the extent the comments veer off the path and are unrelated to city business, they are then quote unquote disruptive. To the good order of the meeting, and then I think we can. Decide that that commenter's time is done. That's my thought, looking at your materials, doing some independent review, as you might imagine, I spent a fair amount of personal time reflecting on. Uh, Monday's meeting uh, and options, so those are my thoughts. But again, we've got time to digest this and and noodle on it before we have the next public meeting. If we're gonna change our rules, we need to do that in a public, the next public meeting.
That's correct.
Yeah. So if you have any thoughts for the good of the order, great, if not, you it's well respected that we have a chance to chew on this and think about it, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thought that I had was. Public comment is welcome. But swearing and calling names is not.
The challenge from the attorney's memo is that swearing is not necessarily unprotected speech, it may be. Boorish behavior. Uh, and it may be disruptive to the conduct of the meeting and it may not relate to city business, that's where we kind of have to draw the line a little bit, yeah. Mr. Bokey and then Mr. Anderson.
I I have a couple of questions and on on. And under item two other jurisdictions, I guess, I'm team pages in. You have Seattle City Council Rules of Procedure, comments must be relevant to item on agenda and comments on other matters are disruptive. Tacoma also has a rule, public is limited to items on the agenda and item must be specified in advance. So those two entities basically. Don't take any complaints about any other matters of the other than what's on the agenda. So so you don't. So so if I'm mad about. You know, nobody cleans up my park down the street for me, I can't come to a city council meeting and talk, I have to do it by some other means.
It may be that those are the rules they've chosen to adopt, I would um. Remind you that there are other ways that people can lodge complaints, um. Many years ago, I did an internship in the city or the city manager's office in Tacoma. And part of the job when you're an intern there is to man a certain phone line. You pick up all the complaints for a given day, it was very educational to understand what citizens care about. But um, they have a variety of other ways of taking in comments and and you're well aware, we have a lot of other ways to to have things come in as well, the three one one system. And and we're all available for calls from the public, we're not um, you know, hidden away anywhere. But I understand that this council has always wanted to hear it at the meetings as well.
Mr. Anderson and then Mr. Brand Center.
Yeah, I. I share Mr. Bulkey's concern, I I don't think it's advisable to limit. Uh, public comment to agenda items for the very reason that. Um, people. Have the opportunity to air their grievances. Occasionally even make a compliment, but uh, that should be open, you could. Keep the public criticism down by never putting anything on an agenda, if you know, if you know, it's. Uh, but we have, there are really two problems that. I I think one is remote comment allows for. Overly broad participation that's random and not related to the city. Uh, by people who intend to be disruptive or to overwhelm. The narrative. With volume. Uh, and so the to the extent that we can limit that. I I think appropriately, you still give people the opportunity to participate. I I think that should be done, I think there's a uh, a looming problem. That may be even more. Of more concern, and that is the ability. To use A I to slam, whether it's. Don't sell dog meat in Korea or whatever, and hit every city council meeting in every jurisdiction every week. That has remote comment, just set it up where the A I is making the comments. So uh, I see the limit, the way to limit that, I don't think this is contrary to the the statute, statute says. To attend, you you can't make a condition, identification of the individual and. A condition of attending a meeting. But I think you can make. Doesn't say you can't make a. Identification of. A method of communicating with someone who's requesting to speak. A condition. So say if you want to, if you want to. To speak. We're already doing it, sign up, give us your name. Give us a contact point, we call you. Register in advance, just like you, you, somebody can submit a written comment in advance. And that gives everyone who wants to. A low barrier method of participation because it's more convenient saying, I'm too far away. Or I don't want to be exposed because I'm, I have a health problem, I don't want to be exposed to. Uh, whatever the reason is, except virtually anything. Uh, that's a lower barrier than. Getting in your car, coming here, sitting in the audience and waiting your turn. Uh, so uh, I'd be in favor of. Of limitations on. The remote access, in addition that. It it isn't addressed in the statute because the problem. Didn't exist.
Didn't exist, right?
Uh, we didn't have remote participation per se prior to COVID and changing the rules in Washington, we didn't have A I.
Right.
Uh, looming on the horizon, so while there may be some risk to it legally. Is a computer in Wyoming going to be willing to challenge us, then they have to identify themselves and say who they are, and so.
Mr. Brand Center.
Well, I I have to say that I am broadly. Okay, with our rules that we have. That uh. The the most significant recent change had to do with during COVID, when we were ourselves actually meeting. Uh, early and that we allowed for public comment to come in uh. Re- re- remotely. For the most part. That comment has over time. Been uh. Acceptable, okay, uh, and 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 worth listening to. Okay, being able to to go go and do that, so I and and I think that it has increased. Um. Community participation, even to the point of people who. Either listen to the meeting or then go into YouTube and see the. The place of the meeting, and I think that has. Uh, i- i- improved our communication and the community's. Ability to understand what it is that we do and what we're what we're doing. Um, I I definitely agree with Councilmember Bokey that I I belong on a couple of other boards. That have the rules that say public people can comment on things that are on today's agenda. So that you can come and you can tell us what you think two minutes before we're going to vote on it. When we've already looked at it at three study sessions and being able to go and do that and 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 you it it never. It's kind of the same thing as holding a public hearing on the same day you're gonna take the final action, you know. I I so I so so I wouldn't want to do that. Uh, there is a. A rule. That's not written down. In our. Uh, council rules. And that is that council members are free. To disregard and place no credibility on anything anybody says in public comment. If we choose to do, that's how we choose to do that and over the. Number of years I have had times of when that has frequently been the case. Uh, to to be able to go on. I I do think that the one area that we may want to tighten up our rules is to. Uh. Be more clear that the authority of presiding officer to maintain. Decorum. In the meeting is there, and and to be honest, that it's gonna have more to do, less to do with. Remote comments, but that comments that are made here and then you start to get. An interaction that really disrupts the meeting, you know, to be honest, one person makes saying outrageous things in in virtual comment. If it doesn't stimulate. Uh. A big reaction in the room is irritating, but not disruptive to the meeting. Um, so I, you know, it's so so and and Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that you look at the rules and you really decide. That is there something that you would like to be able to say that gives you very explicit. Options. Wh- wh- when when something disruptive is happening, uh, I I think it's. We may be a little vague on that, but and I would certainly want you to have clear authority to. To take actions and not have to. Make it up.
No, it's a good point, and I I think I can noodle on that a little bit, I do. Want to ponder the ability. To allow virtual comment. But with reasonable restrictions, in other words, registering in advance, maybe an hour with the city clerk, providing your. City of residence, you don't have to provide an address, but your name and like, you know, Jo- Jason Wayland, Lakewood, Washington, my phone number six. And then the clerk, I think. Would then dial those people back at the appointed time during public comment and those that. Stood around to make their comment were likely ones intent on doing so in a very legitimate, non disruptive way, those that were. Hell bent on being hell raisers, perhaps might go away, it's hard to say.
We could certainly present you an option of that sort, um, there is some provision in state law that um. We can work with to get to that point.
And and I agree, I'll look at the rules and maybe we'll chat a little bit about tightening up the standards for decorum, but I think to be clear, based upon. Your memo to us and perhaps our independent review, uh. Bad language and bad speech by itself is. Not necessarily disallowed.
That, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, that's correct, and I would um. I would like to take credit for this memo, Ms. Eileen McCain, our Assistant City Attorney, did the majority of the research and the writing of it, however, I would tell you. That the city manager, the city clerk, myself and Ms. McCain did spend some time chewing through. All of the different pieces of information, including, as you know, you have um. Access through hyperlink to the A C L U's piece on this, and that is a piece specifically for local governments in Washington State. As well as the M R S C piece on this and um. You also saw the hyperlinks to a couple of other cities, so we really, we really spent some time kind of bouncing it around because we see the struggle that this is for any public body.
Well, it is interesting because you're sitting in the hot seat and you're making this quick decision whether it's disruptive. To the meeting. And in many cases, I think it is, depending on how, I think frankly, how it. Some of the. Call it what it is, hate speech, you know, if you had an audience full of folks that were. Getting exercised about that speech, specifically if they were among a class of folks that felt maligned by the speech. I think it does become disruptive, in my opinion. So, but yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I also would uh. Seek to caution ourselves from over correcting from one night.
Absolutely.
By being prepared if it does happen.
Yep, yep.
Well, we don't want to paint ourselves into a corner.
No, for sure. But I have to say, it was a day that will live in infamy because it was a unique evening for all of us, for sure. Yeah, I'm Mr. Anderson. Yeah.
For clarification, are you asking for time on this in the first quarter to go over your rules of procedure?
I think so, I don't think it has to be the first meeting in January, because we have plenty of other things that night.
It won't be the first meeting in January, Mr.
But I I think we can talk a little bit about it in terms of the appropriate restrictions on virtual public comment. It makes sense, and maybe some other jurisdictions jurisdictions at that point in time will have fleshed out some of their rules as well, and we can chat. About best practices and then. Uh, we can go from there.
What we will do is we will take a look at the different things that we have in the pipeline for you, and I assure you, the beginning of the new year is going to be a busy time.
Sure.
And we will find uh, an appropriate time when you can take. The time necessary.
Absolutely, what I don't hear council want to do is make any changes that would disallow people from commenting on any matter pertaining to city business as opposed to just.
Yes.
Those issues on the agenda, so that's clear.
That's loud and clear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, appreciate that, and now we'll turn to uh, city council comments, provided Mr. Bokey is not disruptive to the good order of the meeting. That was it, that was it, that was the only matter. Nothing from Mr. Bokey, Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I just had the opportunity last week to go to the A W C, um. I forget the name. The newly elected, just about for elected officials to go over some rules and procedures and brush up on some information, so I thought that was great. And um, wanted to wish everybody a very happy holiday, whatever holiday they're celebrating, and a very wonderful new year.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Brand Center.
Thank you, um, Mr. Mayor, uh, I I while I will be here on the uh. Thirteenth, I will not be able to make the um, special meeting on the evening of the fourteenth, uh, which is the meeting with the. Regarding the the Pierce County Council Legislative Agenda. I I I, speaking of legislative agendas, I did.
Uh, I, I, speaking of legislative agendas, I did get a chance and took a review of the uh. Uh, the, the, the Sheriff's and Police Chiefs Association, their legislative agenda, and I was, and I noted that it. Significantly resembled ours. Uh, being able to go through and that, and that, one of their three items was, was pursued, and another was uh. Uh, the, the juvenile uh, restrictions on, 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 on juvenile police officer interactions. Uh, being able to go and do that. Uh, but, but, but the way that, that there, there was worded. And juvenile police officer, they included uh, an item that said. That they wanted to preclude. Lawyers telephonically. Uh, making decisions for juveniles regarding their rights and, and being able, whether they would be able to speak with. Police or not, uh, when, that, 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 a telephonic connection to an attorney. To be able to go and do that, and I, I, I found that strange. It wasn't something that I, I, you know, I, I thought attorney, attorneys advised you, but they couldn't. Actually make the decision that no, you can't, this juvenile can't, cannot be spoken to. That the juvenile would, would, would at least retain some rights to be able to listen to his attorney and then decide otherwise. Um, but uh, maybe, maybe not, uh, and, and there was earlier in the week, uh. Um, uh, Chief, Chief, Chief Hunter, uh. She shared a conversation that he had with someone from the. Public Defense folks that was in charge of this. Providing attorneys to juveniles down there and, and. Yeah, yeah, her comment sounded very much to me like. Hmm, that uh, you know. Parents are not wise enough to actively advocate for their own children. Um, you know, which is significantly different than I think that, that our view was, and. And, and I also got the impression of, well, here is a person with a newly created agency that's trying to preserve X number of jobs. To be able to, to go and do that, so I think there is uh. Some, 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 some traction, but that we're going to have to um. Keep up uh, our, 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 our efforts to advocate for those that they're just not. Obvious that the state legislature will just say, oh, well, of course, we'll, we'll, we'll do that. We're, we're gonna have to work.
Well, help me emphasize it. Tomorrow night or Wednesday night. Mr. Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, last week I had the opportunity to attend the Public Safety Advisory Committee. Uh, session, and there was a great presentation from uh. Our, our police department on uh, some speed studies they did, um, because they're looking at putting some speed cameras in the city. Uh, and they are limited to having them near our parks and hospitals, uh, but it was eye opening that. You know, for example, on Silicon Boulevard, uh. On a given day during daylight hours, there were seven thousand vehicles going one direction. Ten percent of those vehicles were traveling more than eleven over the speed limit. Uh, one percent were doing more than twenty over the speed limit, so that's seventy vehicles doing fifty-five or higher on Silicon Boulevard. On a given day, uh, so more to come on that as they look into launching those, uh. Those cameras, I think that will be valuable to the city to increase our safety. Uh, I also attended the AWC conference on Saturday, uh. Enjoyed meeting other electeds from around the region, uh, and interacting with Councilmember Bell and Councilmember Elect Pearson. I think it's gonna be great when, uh, when we're all together as we kick off next year. Wanted to thank uh, Dredman's Field for coming in and uh, speaking to the uh. Role that courts are taking. I look forward to attending the court session because I want to understand what uh. What it's like for people going through the processes. I attended the school board meeting tonight before this session, uh, and uh. They went through the process of sunsetting three of their members to uh, welcome three newly elected school board members. Uh, last week, uh, Carol Jacobs was in to give her final. Uh, presentation on behalf of the school board, uh, and her retirement tonight was uh, was well attended by her family, um. And she announced the launch of a foundation and committed a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, to go specifically towards scholarships for our school district members.
Wow.
So that was huge, uh, and very huge, so, so thanks to her and her family for that.
Amazing.
Uh, on Saturday evening, I attended the parade with uh, all of you folks. Uh, it was, that was really exciting. I wanna thank specifically our food truck vendors who were there, um. There wasn't a whole lot of people hitting their establishments, uh, but they were all very, very grateful and welcome. Uh, and I got some really good tacos from one of the trucks, so I recommend them next time. Uh, next week, uh, the five K, I'm looking forward to being there. Hopefully I'll see a bunch of you there as well. Uh, and much like Councilmember Bell, I wanna wish happy holidays, uh, and Merry Christmas to members of our community. And finally, I want to uh, extend a special thank you to Councilmember Anderson. I, I won't be able to be here for the event next week. Um, but you have paved quite the path for all of us, and I'm eternally grateful for that. So thank you.
It's Mr. Anderson's time. Councilmember Anderson.
Mr. Branstadter's comment about the uh, the juveniles interacting with police, you know. There are uh, cross purposes. A defense attorney's job is to. Minimize any chance of their client being convicted of anything. A responsible parent's cause is to correct bad behavior. So, they're at cross purposes, so you wanna talk to the parents. I was gone, uh, I will be here on Wednesday. Mr. Coffield, I will not be here on Thursday, I will be here the next Monday, that means I have eight hundred meetings down and two to go.
Eight hundred down, two to go. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I attended the promise board meeting last week, this week. Uh, last week, and um, they're talking about their big event coming up on January twenty seventh. Uh, it's um. The, and the convention between the youth-serving professionals and the youth and faculty becoming collaborative, so. Looking forward to that, and they're really excited about all this going on and that is on our. Plan and on our plan. The goals are to discuss practices and strategies. That are currently in place to create mentally and emotionally safe spaces. So they're still talking about the space and the com- the difficulty that the youth are having, so. That was, it was a good meeting and we're looking forward to this. They have, they invite, you will be invited. Great, I made sure.
I'm sure.
Uh, on the parade, I did, I enjoyed it, even though it was wet and rainy and cold. Um, Alicia and I had a great time. We got to take a picture with the Grinch. She goes, that was the highlight of my night. Yeah, and then um, I will not be able to make the meeting on Thursday.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, well, on. Wednesday, the sixth, I attended the public officials reception put on by the Tacoma Pierce County Chamber. Well attended. It was at the Tacoma Art Museum. Uh, it was a wonderful thing not to be on a Monday, which is historically always been on a Monday right before a council meeting, so you didn't get a chance to chat with very many people. Uh, so it was really great to be able to meet and greet a ton of folks, including members of the business community, so. Lots of uh, very positive comments communicated about Lakewood. And uh, I'm proud on behalf of all of the team here in Lakewood to receive those comments because we have done a lot of good work. Not just in twenty twenty-three, but in the last five to ten years, so people are noticing. Uh, the parade this Saturday was fantastic. Again, kudos to staff. I wanna make sure that they feel the, the warmth and love, even though it was wet and cold. Uh, it was a great event. It went off without a hitch, I thought. Uh, the tree actually lit this year, so that was a good thing. So the magic was still in the air for the, the two young lads that got to, to pull the trigger, so that was a lot of fun. So thanks for putting that together. And after that, I raced out to Thornwood Castle. I was uh. Invited by the owners to come and just uh, share a little holiday cheer with their families, so I went out there. It was a lovely event. Uh, we talked a little bit about our event coming up on the fifth of January. They're looking forward to having us out there. This is with the two-two striker brigade folks, so. They remain uh, a wonderful community asset, and they look forward to seeing all of you on January fifth. Tonight, I attended a Pierce Transit meeting before this one, so it's been uh, since four o'clock that I've been in meetings. And we passed a budget, uh. Not surprising that the Pierce Transit budget eclipses by a large factor the entirety of a city like Lakewood. It's amazing to me, but uh, they're doing lots of things, trying to increase their service hours back up to fifty thousand service hours annually. They're struggling like a lot of organizations with maintaining folks in positions, whether it's journeyman mechanics. Drivers, the like, it's just challenging maintaining full service operation, uh, when you've got. Institutions to the north and to the south that are paying more money, so it's, it's an ongoing challenge. The fourteenth is one of our evenings, as we mentioned, Mr. Coffield, we do have an invitation to go to the KWA. Open house that night. Right beforehand, they, she sent an invitation to, I don't think it was just to me. But we need to figure out an appearance for a half hour before we come back here, because I think. They loved the meeting with us and would like to show us what they have to offer by way of their senior services and stuff that evening, so. I'll talk to you more about that, and I look forward to seeing all of you at the fun run. In your holiday regalia this Saturday, Mr. Boki, so if you can run with your red sweater on, it'll be, it'll be fabulous. Right? Yeah, exactly. Happy holidays to all of you. If we don't see you out there, thank you for tuning in online and for being part of the great city of Lakewood. We're adjourned.